I'd like to call to order the March 24th, 2025, Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please take the staff, uh, take the role?
Chair Batista.
Here.
Vice Chair Betcher.
Present.
Commissioner Morgan. Oh, my apologies, one of our attendees dropped. Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Landis. Commissioner Landis, are you there?
We see you.
Commissioner Stenson.
Hello, President. Are we doing a roll call? I just came in.
Yes, and, uh,
Okay.
I do not see Commissioner Wu, but Commissioner Morgan has entered the chat.
Yes, hi, present.
All right, so item number three, approval of the March 10th, 2025 meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? I am not hearing or seeing any, so we'll go ahead and accept those as presented. Uh, item number four, public comment. Let the record show, there is no public in person tonight. Um, was there anybody who, uh, registered to, uh, speak online?
No one has registered to speak online.
Okay, we'll move on to item number five, overview of Housing Action Plan in Review of Middle Housing Development Code Amendments.
Hello, thank you, everyone. And we are back to talk more about the, it was closer to me, back to talk more about the code amendments tonight. Uh, we had originally planned on talking more about the Housing Action Plan because the code amendments are happening on such a fast timeline, we wanted to make sure that we were able to put some more material in front of you tonight to react to. We will, if there's time at the end, talk about the Housing Action Plan. We'll talk a little bit more about the schedule. There's gonna be a lot more information about that presented at the code, um, sorry, the community workshop that's happening on Wednesday. Um, and there is information in the slides about the Housing Action Plan as well, so that is available to you to read through. All right, to get started, um, we'll pull up the slides.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, probably a good place to start. Okay, so like I just said, um, today, our goal is to seek more guidance on some of the housing types and initial standards. So we've pulled together some initial numbers and definitions and different things that we want to get your take on, and we also have some more background information on feasibility and some test fits on kind of standard Mount Lake Terrace parcels that we can share as well. So, just an overview of the agenda. All right. Yeah, so we'll just briefly recap what we heard last time. Um, I'll share some information about market context and kind of what's feasible in Mount Lake Terrace. And then Heidi and Sandra will share, um, some information about the initial development standards and housing types and design standards. And then at the end, we'll talk a little bit about the Housing Action Plan overview and then go over next steps briefly. So to get started, this is just a quick recap of what we heard last time. And we talked a lot about affordability. We heard that it's really important, um, to you all and also to residents in Mount Lake Terrace. We heard that you're interested in all of the middle housing types. There weren't any that you're wanting to exclude from the zoning code. Um, interested in keeping the density caps in R1 and R2, but interested in really funneling a lot of the density to R3 and R4, and so not having density caps in those zones. Interested on distributing the scale both by zone and by density and maybe by housing type, and we'll talk more about that later. We heard, well, we discussed a lot about FAR as a standard. We didn't hear any strong interest in, but we also didn't hear any strong objections to using that as a standard. And some of the other things that we talked about in terms of the code were the setbacks. We heard concern for privacy, especially on the rear and side yards. Um, we heard a lot about wanting to make sure that there's an adequate progression of public to private into lots and not having, you know, everyone kind of right out on the street or having, you know, kind of a weird progression of density as you go from, you know, right, you know, close to the street back to, you know, closer to the houses that would be kind of to the back. Uh, we talked about solid waste space requirements and full block developments and infill and kind of mid-block connections and how that might work. And then finally, we talked a bit about bonusing. And so I think nearly all of this, if not all of it, will be a recurring theme throughout tonight. So in between when we talked last to you and when we talked tonight, we have done some feasibility analysis and we have also, you know, looked at kind of a market study of what's being built in Mount Lake Terrace and where, you know, the prices are at and various things that would be impacting what's feasible and what's not. And so we're just gonna share some of those key findings tonight to inform our discussion going forward. So to start, we talked last time about what we mean when we say affordable housing. And so when we talk about affordable housing, we're really, there's two buckets that it generally falls into. There is regulated affordable housing, which is typically income or rent restricted affordable units. They're often built with financial support, things like tax credits, um, and other incentives like that. And then there is non-regulated affordable housing, which is what we would refer to as attainable housing. And that's really what we're talking about when we talk about middle housing, and that's housing that is relatively affordable compared to other types of development that might be happening. And it doesn't necessarily have specific subsidies or any kind of rent restriction or sale restriction or anything like that, but it is lower cost comparatively to other types. Go to the next slide, please. So here are some example prices for newer for-sale housing in Mount Lake Terrace. And as you can see, and, you know, this is on average, and as you can see, the, the middle housing does tend to be more attainable than the single detached housing. We're seeing the single detached housing going for a lot of the time upwards of a million dollars, whereas we're seeing things like duplexes and townhomes kind of more in the 750 to 950 range. And then as you get, you know, kind of smaller on the scale cottage housing, that could be like a thousand to 1,500 square feet, we're seeing those sell for like 600 to 750K within the last year or two. And so again, that's not to say that a $900,000 townhome is necessarily affordable, quote unquote, to every household, but it is more attainable to the average household than a $1 million single unit detached house might be.
I, I know we've hit the 1 million and over mark as an outlier, but are, is like for new, single unit detached in the city now is averaging over a million?
I would say for new construction on the larger side, yes.
Yes, yeah, we, we hit, uh, over a million probably, I think for the first time, five years ago. Um, if it's a newer single, single family, then yeah, you're over a million.
I remember the first property that did it, and it partly did it because it had such a huge lot, and it was a big house on top of it, but now we're averaging that? For new, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, everything at where I'm at is not new.
Where'd you get the numbers for duplex in Mount Lake Terrace?
So there are a handful of duplexes in, um, it's like kind of central, kind of right in the middle. They aren't new construction necessarily, so we accounted for that in our numbers, but they're going for around 800 currently. And then looking also at like Edmonds and other, uh, similar communities nearby and what those are going for relative to single family housing.
Okay, yeah, I'd be interested to see relative, um, where these numbers derive from in the report.
Yeah, we will share that.
Real quick on the, on the single unit detached, do we know what the average square footage?
Yeah, we're looking for those, they're probably between 2,000 and 2,500 square feet, I would say.
Yeah, I would say that's about right. We're probably seeing just over two, so probably from like 21, 22 to 25, 26, depending, roughly, gonna run you that.
I'm sorry to belabor the point, I know we have a lot to get through. Um, do we have, uh, are you presenting this on the open house on Wednesday?
We are not gonna get this into the weeds on Wednesday.
Okay. When I see neighbors, when I see numbers like this, especially public facing, I think it helps to translate this into like a household income level. So like, you know, what household income does it take to afford this amount of money to buy or rent?
Yeah, and that's, we'll definitely do that, especially as we get into the, like the Housing Action Plan piece of things and looking at what does it mean to be, quote unquote, attainable in Mount Lake Terrace and what incentives might be needed to kind of bridge that gap.
Cool.
I know we haven't had a lot of cottage home developments, but at least for the townhomes, what are we averaging on square footage?
Those we're looking at, and Chrissy, if you have to jump in, but I think, uh, like, there are a couple that are smaller, like under 1,500, but for the most part, I would say maybe 16 to 1,900 square feet. The cottages we're seeing were, um, between 1,000 on the lower end and up to like 1,500. And yeah, a big reason why middle housing is sold at a lower price is because it is smaller. And so that's why you're seeing that scale. Um, the exception being the rental housing. Um, the rents on middle housing, we do see them being lower than for larger apartment complexes, but it's actually not because the units are smaller, they're actually usually bigger. But when you think about the larger apartment complexes that you've seen being built, like around the town center, they tend to have more amenities, like maybe they have a gym or, you know, a community space. They're also in a more urban area that's more walkable, maybe it's closer to transit. And so the rents on those, like you can see, this is from, I think, tourist station apartments, um, for a two-bedroom apartment are typically go for more just because of the amenities that are in those larger apartment complexes than you would see in a building that would have maybe like six to 12 units. That would be in more of a residential suburban context.
That is really interesting.
Did yours, when you guys were researching the numbers, did you look at, um, what the rents were if it was a single family home or a townhome that was being rented?
Yes, we did.
What were those averaging?
Those are, I'm trying to think off the top of my head, definitely higher, um, especially for townhomes, I think, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, but, um, closer to what a larger apartment complex would be. I will say usually those are more profitable as a rule of thumb as for-sale housing, so you, you don't have a lot of it here, which makes it a little bit hard to triangulate. Like there are some townhouses, townhouses for rent, for sure.
Yeah.
Single-family homes too, it's a little bit hard to pinpoint because rather than, like, an investor or a property manager that would be managing those units, it's usually, you know, it's a homeowner who has, you, maybe it's a second home and they're renting it out. And so it's a lot less dependent on, like, the market specifically, and it's more about the financial circumstances of that property owner and what, you know, they're willing to rent it for. And, you know, maybe they're renting to a family member, or maybe they're renting to, you know, college students or, you know, there's just a lot more flexibility around those, so.
Yeah, I, I only ask 'cause, I mean, I'm obviously not checking all of our new develops, developments to see who's buying, but, you know, clearly the developers are selling them, they're not, they're not holding it on, uh, as investment properties, but I, you know, I haven't been looking at who, you know, who's buying these and, you know, if investors are moving in. I do know that our first cottage home development, you know, we were really excited about because we thought, oh, great, it's gonna be affordable housing coming in that people will be able to buy. Well, they decided to keep it as an investment property and rent the units instead of sell them, and they, and this was a long time ago, and they rented them for an exorbitant amount. It was very disheartening to see what we thought was gonna be sort of that great first step into affordable housing, and it turned out to be inaffordable in rentals. So I, that's why I ask, 'cause I know that, uh, as we, you know, get more attention and more development is gonna come in, we may see more of those, uh, investors come in and just buying whole swaths of development and keeping it as rentals, sort of defeating the purpose, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to find ways to allow more affordable housing, but then what gets built isn't being used the way we anticipated. So it'd be good, you know, to kind of have those numbers as well. Okay, you know, do we wanna sacrifice, you know, some of our, our standards if that's gonna be the case? We don't know. Unfortunately, it's gonna be a wait and see, but, you know, in the back of my mind, that we got stung over a decade ago, and I just holding my breath that it doesn't happen again, so.
I would just say that we've seen most of them be for sale. I can only think of one town home development that's rental. Um, the other cottage developments are, um, were sold as well. I think, you know, we're talking about supply and we're not gonna be able to control if something is rented or something is sold. I think it's more about having available supplies, so you don't have where the prices are kind of through the roof as well, right? So that's part of it too, is just having the supply versus are they gonna sell them or are they going to rent them? Because that's just something that we're not gonna be able to control.
Thanks, Chrissy. Heidi, do you wanna go to the next slide? We'll, um, moving through this. So talking a bit about the development opportunities and density in Mount Lake Terrace, so we talked last time about how there has been more whole block development rather than infill in Mount Lake Terrace, but we're expecting that those opportunities, they're not going to last forever, there's only so many whole blocks that are, you know, eligible for redevelopment and would be sold at a price that you could do it at. And we know that there's also limited vacant land in Mount Lake Terrace and the apartment buildings that you do have, even if they're more older garden-style apartments, even if they're rented at a lower rate than they previous, or than other new construction would be, um, you typically see that those are pretty unlikely to redevelop, actually. Um, it's much more common that investors will buy it, they'll renovate maybe some of the vacant units while continuing to bring in the rental uni, or the rental income from the non-vacant units. And then they'll, you know, maybe continue to renovate over time, or they'll sell to another investor that might renovate some more of the units and so on and so forth. And in an economy, in a market where the rents are increasing and the market has been growing, you do see that those apartments, they do turn over more often, like maybe every five to 10 years rather than, you know, 10 to 20, but you don't often see that they're torn down and redeveloped. You see a lot more often that they're kind of slowly over time improved, quote unquote.
Do you know, is, is there, seeing that it doesn't happen very often, if at all, if, if there is a measurable threshold at which, which point any, you know, any investor who has the means to buy, like, you know, some of these apartment complexes that we have, 'cause we have quite a few in the city, where they take one look at it and would be like, okay, now it's at a level where redevelopment makes much more sense than continuing to just sort of give life freshen ups, you know?
Yeah.
You know, very, very limited cosmetics, like, oh, we put a new coat of paint on it, or we changed the name of the complex, and that's usually what we get.
Yeah, it, it's usually, you see that in markets that are really hot, where the rents that you could potentially get if you were to replace it with something slightly denser would be so much higher than what you're already getting, but you have kind of a known quantity in the apartment that you have in terms of it has this many tenants and it would cost this much to improve it, and usually, you know, it's a risk to totally redo that. You don't know what the, you know, financing might look like, you don't know what the ultimate construction costs will be. You have a good idea, but it's more risky. So it's, it's usually only in markets that are growing really, really fast, where there's just been huge increases in rent, and I wouldn't say that that's necessarily happening here at this time.
Um, at what point would the age of the structure play, play into that? Because some, some of our complexes are a lot older than what you might think. Some of them are probably gonna be pushing 50, 60 years old pretty soon.
I mean, as long as they're being rented out, I would say, I mean, as long as it's structurally sound, obviously, it doesn't necessarily matter. You can continue to put in renovations and do repairs as necessary, but unless it kind of deteriorates to a point where you're having trouble filling it with tenants, the age isn't necessarily the deciding factor. So thinking about development in an infill context, so if a property owner decides to sell and it's at a price that a developer is able to pay for it, the land cost that they pay obviously goes into the total development cost, and you see that passed on into the sales price. And so in this little graphic here, you can see that even if the, like, the building cost is similar or, you know, pretty close, being able to divide the land cost out makes that minimum sales price that a developer would need to sell the units at in order to make a profit, it can just be much lower. And so when we're talking about increasing density and how that really does reflect, you know, right across into the pro forma and the feasibility of the units, um, in general, increasing density will increase the feasibility. I'm just touching briefly on the form that units take and the tenure. So for stacked units, it really, so what matters for the tenure is whether or not you can basically own the land underneath you, because if you can't, then to sell them, you would have to sell them as condos, and there's a long history in Washington and basically every other state that condos are subject to construction defect liability that other forms of housing just aren't subject to. And so that adds a lot of cost to them in term, and also risk, but you have to also buy, you know, more expensive insurance policies and things like that. So stacked units, you almost always see them as rentals unless the condos are sold as luxury condos at a pretty high price. The next slide. And so the flip side of this is fee simple units, um, which can be side-by-side or detached units. And Mount Lake Terrace does allow them to be fee simple. Um, not every jurisdiction does, but here they are. So you can own the land underneath the unit, which means they're not condos. And so in generally, you see that the, the side-by-side units, the fee simple units are sold as for sale. Like, they are rented and they're rented more than stacked units are sold, but it's usually for sale, it's usually more profitable that way. Um, a note on rental housing, so small-scale rental housing, there's a number of reasons for this, but it can be more challenging to build than larger apartments. And even this goes for like fourplexes and sixplexes versus apartments that have, you know, 12 to 20 units. Um, they're just at that level, the economies of scale just aren't there. And even when you get up above like 10 units, say, you do start to see that. And like I said earlier, the rents are often lower. Um, you also see that the investor pool is a lot smaller. Um, so large, more institutional investors, they're not necessarily interested in purchasing a fourplex and managing it. The property management is pretty inefficient at that scale to, you know, do all the building management and things like that. But you do see that more, there are more small local investors, like people who are maybe interested in buying a fourplex and renting out and living in one of the units, but the pool of investors is a lot smaller for that type of thing. Okay, and kind of wrapping this all up, says a general summary of kind of the relative market strength of each of these different types that we've been talking about. And this is not a reflection necessarily of the consumer demand for these units, but the, the feasibility that a developer would be looking at when they're deciding what to build. And so you do see that detached large units are the most feasible housing type. It's, you know, generally true here, it's generally true everywhere, um, especially when they get on the larger side. And there may be limited demand at the highest end of the price range, like there's maybe not that many people who are willing to spend a million and a half dollars on a house, but in general, you see these being built without, they're, they're doing well. You also see that the side-by-side fee simple attached units, like townhomes or duplexes, there's also a market here for that. You've seen that where you've allowed townhomes, they've, there's been a lot of townhome development. In our pro forma analysis, we looked and basically at around six townhomes, you start to see that density be competitive with the detached units. Um, and so if a developer can fit six townhomes on a lot, that's, that can be more profitable than one single family or even two detached units, but it does take a certain level of density to start making that pencil. But when it, when it works, it works, and you see a lot of townhome development. We talked about cottages, which are those small units. Um, especially, the more you can fit on the lot, the more feasible they are, but they also, because they're detached and because they're smaller, they have higher fixed costs that just don't amortize as well across other types of housing, but you do see them being built, you've seen them be built here. Um, however, I will say that if they aren't, you know, capped at a certain size, they, they get more feasible the bigger they get because you can sell them for more and more. And so without other interventions happening, you will see them start to creep up into that more of a detached large unit, single-family home size. And then I already talked a lot about this, about this, so I'll just briefly touch on it, but your stacked units just aren't generally competitive against those for-sale housing types. And so what does that mean? Tie a bow on this before we move on, is that to compete with the large detached units, middle housing will likely need to be allowed at higher densities. Like I said, you know, once you get to six townhomes, they start to be competitive, four maybe, but six is generally better than four. And then again, for the detached units on, that are on the small side, the ADUs and the cottages, to actually be a more attainable option, they do need to be smaller than the detached large units that you're getting now. And again, to make those smaller units penciled, more density is always helpful. And then if you're really interested in incentivizing stacked flats, um, I would say rentals, condos are probably unlikely to happen at this time, just with the legislation that's out there. But if you are interested in getting more stacked rentals, multiplexes, they may need additional regulatory incentives like density bonuses or other financial incentives to compete. Um, we saw that in our feasibility analysis, once you get to 12, 14, 18 units, it starts to work better. Um, but the fourplexes and the sixplexes are much less feasible, so. Yeah, yeah, I'm done.
Sorry. He's raising his hand.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, this feasibility summary here is interesting because you talked about, like, some demand side things in terms of like how much it costs to build and distribute the money and then also, or I guess that's actually a supply side thing, and then also demand side things where it's like, do people want, you know, are, are they popular, do people want, like, when I see, um, like, in Seattle, they've got this, you know, thing where they take the single family home and then they add the ADU and the DADU. And when I see them on the market, the little DADUs seem to pop up really quick, and then the little bigger houses sort of sit a little bit longer. So I'm guessing that, you know, this is, this would actually put the DADU almost in the green, um, with like, they're very easy to sell, but then the, so it seems like there's like something a little bit more complicated going on there to explain that? Is, is my anecdote wrong, or is it?
No, it's not wrong, and this is a very oversimplified graphic, but, um, I would say it probably goes along with the, the detached small units, just because when it's attached to that bigger unit, that does, takes longer to sell. If it's not condoized, then for a developer to fully make back their profit, they have to sell both. So even if they sell the DADU really quickly, they're still maybe holding on to that larger unit where there's a smaller buyer, buyer pool. I think especially in markets where housing is very, very expensive to buy, those smaller units get snapped up really quick because they're more affordable. And thinking about demand, people really like having their own yards, they like having, you know, a place that feels, you know, it's like a standalone house and a DADU, even if it shares a yard with another home, it feels more like a single-family home than like a townhome. And so you do see those being really popular, but there are also, from the, the cost side to build, there are constraints that aren't necessarily there when you're building one large home on a lot.
Yeah, and I, um, see that that, um, like, level of complexity is probably hard to capture, especially when you're talking about things like, um, uh, you know, what is the difference between a DADU that is condoized versus not?
Yes, yeah.
So I'm really interested to see, like, the study that produced this graph, 'cause I think that, like, probably gives us a lot more answers about, like, what, uh, you know, are there certain features, like, like you were talking about?
Yeah.
Like, I think that would be really valuable to see.
Yes, you will see that. Yes, you will see that when we have more than two weeks in between presentations.
This is, if this is two weeks of work, good job.
Thank you. Yes, the analysis is done, but writing it all up and pulling together the findings in a way that makes sense when you're not just talking through it takes a little bit longer.
So I know that there's always discussion in Olympia about repealing the condo law or at least modifying it because I think everybody recognizes how it sort of depresses the market and really eliminates the opportunity to provide this housing. It really only happens in downtown Seattle where it's a 40 story building with each unit going for a million dollars where they can absorb that cost if they do get sued because of the profit margin that they're making on it. Doesn't apply almost anywhere else in the state. Do you guys happen to have your ear to the ground and know if, I know this has been a years long process, every session it usually gets brought up. Are we getting closer to maybe having a change in that law or it being repealed altogether? Or is it the, the interests that are out there and keeping it will just fight it tooth and nail to not have any changes?
Yeah, I actually worked on a condo, kind of, it was a conversion study looking at apartments to condos and the barriers, but it's the same barriers basically a couple of years ago. And I will say, long story short, there are a lot of barriers to repealing those laws. Just a lot of that's already kind of embedded. There are parties that have vested interests in keeping those laws in place. And also in Colorado, I think they had some legislation that was kind of moving in the right direction. They're a couple of years ahead of us. We have been slowly, you know, chipping away at the condo laws, but even in states where you're seeing they're a little bit ahead of us, developers are really hesitant to be the first one to see if it's really truly better. And so kind of the production of condos is still pretty stalled. And even if today we repealed all of those laws, which I honestly, I don't think is likely to happen, I think it's more we'll chip away at it, chip away at it, chip away at it. But it's still, there's been a lot of risk for a long time and it probably, it's not going to pick up immediately, so.
One of the reasons I ask too, is that the, with our larger multifamily developments that we have, you know, when we see these proposals, you know, especially way back in the day, they, you know, the thought was, oh, we can build these at such a level that we can convert them in the future. So the idea was, is, oh, we'll make them nicer and we'll put, and then of course, you know, that's what they say at the beginning and by the end it all gets value engineered. You're like, really?
Yeah, that's the study I worked on was looking at the feasibility of that and it just does not pencil at the moment. Some of the liability actually restarts the minute that you sell them as condos, even if it was built a long time ago. And so
Really?
There's, yeah, there are a lot of barriers to condos basically and conversions, again, it's kind of like they have to be sold at a really high price in order to make it work, which is unfortunate. I live in a condo, I love it, but.
Yeah, we actually had one apartment complex convert to condos.
Really?
Yeah. Oh, at least 10 years ago now, the far north part of the city. So it's, yeah, garden style apartments and they, they converted the complex to condos.
Yeah, interesting. Yeah, it doesn't never happen, but a lot of stars need to align to make it happen.
And it was, it was an old complex and they did completely refer, I mean, they,
Yeah.
Everybody left and they, I won't say tore it down to the studs, but they definitely refurbished all the, all the units.
Yeah, that's interesting. I'm, I'm lined over. I know we have, we have so much to get through.
I'm going to segue by saying architects also don't like to be involved in condos. Just segue to say architects also don't like to be involved in condos. So reminder, I'm Heidi Oien, I'm with Methune. I'm an architect and an urban designer and Sandra Gergis from our office is also here tonight. She is helping on the standards as well and you'll see her at the community meeting on Wednesday. Okay, we have been working lightning fast. So tonight we're going to propose initial development standards. Of course, we're looking at R1 through four. This map is here in case we want to refer to it later. Just a reminder of the HB 1110 middle housing bill, we are looking at, you're looking at complying with tier two. So you, you have to allow at least two units per lot. You have to at least have, allow four units per lot if one is affordable. That's the one in blue. We're starting to color code things for you. So when you see blue, it's going to apply to a bonus or affordable, for affordable housing. When you see green, it's going to be something about trees and stormwater because you heard that from me last time. Okay, so we heard about other things that are important, public benefits in Mount Lake Terrace, affordable housing, of course. We're also starting to think about what we may, or what you may offer in exchange for those public benefits. So for affordable housing, the state says you need to allow more density or more units, which you'll do in R1 and R2. We decided that last, or two weeks ago, but we think that you should offer more scale or lot coverage, some smaller setbacks and possibly reduce parking to make that happen. We'll go over these in a little more detail and keep looking for the color as we go through. We also heard tree retention is important to you and green stormwater infrastructure. Both of those elements may want smaller setbacks, so the distance from your property line, increased height and possibly reduced parking. Mid block connections, I thought that was a really interesting idea a couple of weeks ago. You may want to allow smaller setbacks and possibly increased height to allow for that more public connection through the block. And then sustainability features may also want reduce, or increased height and reduced parking to make those happen. So we'll keep talking about those. I just wanted to bring them up.
Just for clarification, when you, when you talk about trying to retain, retain trees but are saying smaller setbacks, are you saying smaller setbacks and part of the lot to allow more assemblage of open space in another part?
Right, so if you have a tree that's in a certain spot that you want to retain and you want to build a building of a certain size, you may need to figure, you know, kind of move that building around on the site or make it go higher so that it can still accommodate that tree. Stormwater infrastructure is the same. It takes some, some horizontal space on the site. And so getting that and your parking and your open space and that stormwater infrastructure, it's important to be able to have some flexibility on where your building goes. Okay, so we are just going to walk through the essentially tables that you would see in your code. And we'll start with lot area. We are setting or proposing that you set a 4,800 square foot lot area minimum in each zone. And that is because that is your lowest minimum lot size today. If you were to make it even lower, your density would apply to that lower lot size. If you were to make it higher, you would have some non-compliant lots from the other zones in the way you've rezoned. So I'm seeing some nodding, so that seems good. And then this is just putting in the units per lot that we discussed last time. So two units per lot in R1, four units per lot in R2, up to 9,600 square feet, up to and including 9,600 square feet. So essentially, if you had a double lot, if you were counting 4,800 as your lot, you could, you would, wait, we, we, we decided today, no, that that 9,600 should actually be a double area. So once you get above 9,600 square feet, you start calculating the amount of lot area is equivalent to the same number of units. So a 4,800 square foot lot would get two units and a 9,600 square foot or double lot would get four units. Okay? A little bit confusing, I feel like we need a diagram here.
In the two weeks since last meeting, have you had time to look at what densities we have for R3 and R4 with typical apartments? I imagine not, but I was just curious.
Have we looked at that? Not in a general way, yes, but I don't have a Yeah, and you can see we're still, because we heard from you, you didn't want to have a max necessarily, we have not really dug into that. Is that something we should do?
I don't know if anyone else sees any benefit to it. I think if we don't have it now, the only place it might make a difference is in the areas immediately adjacent to the town, the town center transit area where I think we resigned to, I'm going to say R4, like southeast of the train station.
Let's get to the map. There we go. Southeast of the, so down here, R3.
That brown area right there.
I'm a little less concerned about these because we'll show you test fits pretty soon that show you how many units will fit.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, it's the bigger lots that you have a little more flexibility in, like the, you know, kind of the R4 big apartment complexes and these larger sites.
On our first Calhoun Wall City, I think we could look at density maximums, but until then it doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. Okay, so then in blue, you're seeing the affordable housing bonus. And so that's just, that's doing what the state says to do. You allow four units per lot when one is affordable. And then on, on the R2, you have four as the base and then you add another two for six. Okay. Great, I'm seeing a thumbs up. Okay, so last time we talked about how to allocate the scale. So you were interested in scaling up by zone, but also by unit count, so allowing more area for those extra units to fit in. And you also said you'd consider larger or more scale for certain housing types and you wanted to kind of hear what the feasibility analysis was showing. And so Mackenzie just presented the research showing that stacked flats will be harder to build. So that might be something you want to allow more scale for. It gets more complicated and when we get to the housing test fit, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Okay. Okay, last time we met, FAR didn't seem attractive, though none of you outright objected to it. And so the alternative is using lot coverage by structures, which you already use in most of your current residential zones. And that's what this chart is showing, existing standards. So much of your existing single family houses don't max out that allowed lot coverage. And so you're seeing this little test fit, 22%, typical Mount Lake Terrace, single family house, even though some of your zones go from 40 to even 65% lot coverage. Okay, so we did some test fits and we'll go over these in much more detail. What you're seeing here in the red text is that lot coverage by structures, not, not by paving or anything, just the structures. And then the black big text is the FAR. So you're seeing from single family to duplex and two detached houses, those are in the 22 to 32% lot coverage range, a fourplex, four townhouses, similar range, even a sixplex because it's in the same footprint but goes higher, is still in that lower range. Six townhouses bumps up to 38% and even a higher FAR than any of those. Cottage housing, still low, 25 and 18% on that cul-de-sac lot, so the lowest of everything. Courtyard housing is the highest there and about 29, 30% for the small multiplex. So you see not a lot of building coverage used, but then if you look at the FAR numbers, they're pretty different.
Quick question, what does a typical Mount Lake Terrace lot look like?
I know, right? Yes. Aren't they all like this? No, there is, there is certainly a range. And if, and the smaller the lot and the bigger the house, obviously you're going to have more coverage, but I don't see many that are pushing 40%. Okay, so to effectively use lot coverage as the standard, you'd need to lower the allowed numbers from what exists now. Okay, so we're at 40% across the board, one goes to 60 and then one's 50 to 65. Okay, so I think the question we're going to ask is would you be willing to do that? So if you're willing to do that, to reduce from the current lot coverage standards, these are our proposal, oh, I didn't go to the right thing. So these are the proposals. So R and R2 are identical for how much coverage you get per unit. So we would lower to 35% if you put a single family house there. Two units would bump up a percent, three units bump up another, four units another. And then same thing for R2 and then you keep going up to six units. R3, you'd get a bump up for one unit and keep going up. And then affordability, you would bump up from 42% for six units up to 47%, just allowing that 47% lot coverage or 50% in R4.
How big are these numbers? Are we adding another 48 square feet of lot coverage per, per unit? In a 4,800 square foot lot?
I knew you would want to get into the test fits. It depends on the lot size. It completely depends on the lot size, right? So the percentage of space that's added for a unit depends on the lot size and it depends on what kind of unit you're adding. So if you're adding a townhouse, it's going to be, on a large lot, it's going to be very small percent of building coverage or lot coverage. You're adding a bigger unit to a small lot, it's going to be more. So it's hard to generalize.
Okay, and I know the state published a model code that has like 40 to 50% lot coverage. These don't meet that. Would this be in violation of the state code?
So the state code is, or sorry, the commerce suggestion or the model code is not, it's using FAR as the scale control. It's not mandating that you do that. It's not mandating that you use lot coverage. It's giving some options. So that model code is actually scaling the FAR per unit and then it's setting a maximum of 40 or, or 40 or 50, right? I think they, I think it ranges, was it 50?
Yeah, it could be up to 55% in some cases.
And so this would be very different if you were just proposing lot coverage. And that's why it is very highly tuned because we, if we abandon FAR, you don't have the same fine grained scaling mechanism that you would have.
Okay, and we would also presumably need to submit this in order to show that we're proposing lower numbers than commerce has provided, but we're actually providing equivalent intent to what they're doing, so.
We just went through our review and for Tacoma and they didn't ask us to prove anything that was, unless you were allowing single family to have more for some reason, then you didn't have to prove it. So I don't think you would need to.
Nice, it's great that we have extra flexibility and I'm glad to hear that in determining what the zoning codes are. One of my concerns is that the state code seemed pretty rigorous, so.
Yeah, it's a good question. It's a really good question. So I think the big question here is would you be willing to lower current lot coverage standards in order to finally tune them for the new code?
It is everybody feeling, I haven't forgotten about our online people too, so please speak up, type in. Maybe they're shy. I'll ask a quick question while they're pondering. So for R3s and R4s, the, the line you have for the bonus coverage for the affordability, you just list on R3 47 and then on R4 50. So is that only under the assumption that if they're, they are adding an affordable unit at, and with a six unit total? Or would there be still some sort of bonus density allowance if an affordable unit, like say they're only going to build five units?
It's a really good question we had not thought through.
Okay.
I think it should scale because you've got some big lots in those zones. So we should think about, is it a, let's see, for R1, basically you're getting a 50% bonus for adding a quarter of them as affordable. So maybe you kind of scale that up where 25% is affordable or 20%, something like that. Be interesting to hear your guidance on that if you have experience or Mackenzie, if you have thoughts on that too, or some, any research that like how much affordable housing would you, like Or some, any research that like how much affordable housing would you, like would it just be by a percentage basis by which you would get that bonus?
Okay, because I, I'm assuming too that the developers, if they're offering one unit as affordable, they're probably going to try and recoup that cost on their other, like say if it's a six unit development. One of those units is going to be affordable, five or market rate. I suspect what they'll probably do is make the affordable unit as small as possible and kind of farm that additional square footage out to the other units so that they can then charge a little bit more to probably.
You can set that standard.
We can set that standard.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that's kind of with the multifamily tax exemption too of limiting like, hey, everything can't be a studio apartment for the affordability. The only thing that concerns me is jurisdictionally, how do we keep track of when you have one or two affordable quote, you know, units, how do we ensure that those are, those remain affordable? The other thing I was thinking is like on the R3 example, in, in R4 possibly, something to consider, we didn't talk about this yet, but maybe instead of, I mean, in addition to stacked flats or whatever, seems like there's a lot of desire for cottage housing, but at a smaller scale, which is going to be more, if we limit the size, that it's going to be more land intensive. And so maybe there could be additional lot coverage allowed to get those smaller cottage homes. And entice something like that instead of kind of getting the same size of cottage housing that you do with just a single family home because that pencils out. So just something I'm thinking about.
And we're excited to show more detail on the test fits because it gets into that kind of thing too.
Yeah, I don't know if we got an answer on would we be considering what I guess is a, you know, it's not a down zone, but it's like a a building square footage down zone. I'm actually not sure. I like the simplicity of our current plan where it's just, you know, 40% lot coverage, three stories, like, you know, the math is simple. The, this starts to, I feel like reduce the flexibility and starting to give us, you know, these very specific things, but I imagine there's a get for it as well in terms of this, like maybe it's better control of scale or something. Better like, you know, if there's, I'm, I am undecided. I could go either way, I think, but I don't know what everyone else feels.
Just to clarify, do you mean you go the other way to FAR? Or just a standard lot coverage?
Oh, is that the third option? Standard lot coverage and then this being the standard lot coverage option, how we're designing that, how we're designing our code. So the options are current code, 40% lot coverage, three stories. This where we start to scale it down based on the number of units. And then the third option you're saying is maybe FAR?
Most places are going to an FAR because it's a, it, if you allow more FAR per unit, you're allowing, or you're, you're decreasing the ability for a single family home to just be huge or a, or a duplex even to be huge. Right? So those more units need more area and so you're getting more area through the FAR. And it's able to be finely tuned because it's taking into account both the horizontal lot coverage and the height.
Okay.
So if you set a standard FAR, right, you could get these big units. Lot coverage is a similar, but because there's a height differential, it's not as easy to control. So you could, I think if, I think FAR is really easy and very effective to do. So you could do that. You could go to a graduated building or sorry, lot coverage, which will be a little more fine tuned. So you don't get the big units. You can also just decide to have a flat lot coverage, but if you do that, incentivizing certain things is going to be, you're going to have to pick something else to incentivize people to do the things you want them to do. So if you want them to retain trees or have affordable housing or mid-block connections, there will be something meaningful you have to give outside of just more area to build.
Okay. One thing I would be interested to see is, and maybe this is getting a little too into the weeds, is like how much of recent development in Mount Lake Terrace has sort of pushed those bounds? I know it's probably a little bit imperfect because you have probably not that much to single family development and probably a lot of townhouse development, but we don't really have enough missing middle to like get good data on that, but knowing how much we're incentivizing things and limiting things, I think would be interesting to see.
Yeah, that's good. It would be interesting. And I think we can also kind of approximate when we look at the test of its for of the six townhouse units on a 7,200 square foot lot. We've seen a lot of those. Okay. So no, I'm hearing no decision on what you would want to use as a scaling mechanism or, and I don't know if it, if you want to take a poll of all the commissioners or anything.
I think the no decision is probably where we're at right now.
Yeah, no decision. Okay.
Well, I, I guess I would just say we need to have some type of move, Commissioner Morgan has his hand up too, but I, I think we're due to timing, we, we need to move one way or the other. So I think we need to have the conversation of what direction you're going to give staff to move forward. It doesn't mean ultimately that it totally has to be that way, but just a leaning of, do you want a flat lot coverage with FAR or do you want to be more precise in the lot, in the lot coverage?
And it sounds like we have some other options. So maybe we talk about it at the end. Or decide at the end. But Clark has his hand up, so.
Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, I guess I was just coming from, so I had some technical difficulties for there for a little bit, but do we have any historical contacts from neighboring cities or sister cities in how this has worked out? And feedback from them on how that has increased density or created barriers for developers? You know, because I feel like we're talking about things that might have existed around here in the commercial space for years, but we're now getting into residential and not a lot of developers or you know, landowners or anything really have gotten into this. So I'm kind of curious, like from a realist standpoint, how will these impact? You know, what we're talking about. And I, I would like to make a decision rather than guessing or saying what I want to happen. I'd like to see us make decisions based on what has happened in the past and what we need to happen in moving the needle.
Makes sense. I can, we can show you what the model code recommends. Mackenzie, you have experience in Portland or other, we, I mean, we can, we can show you what other places are doing. We also, we also have.
And I think that's actually, and that might actually be the most important thing. When I'm thinking about economies of scale, like if I was a builder and I was building in multiple jurisdictions, I would want a very similar housing type because that would allow me to then lower the cost of building. If I'm building a Mount Lake Terrace and I'm building in Kenmore and I'm building in Shoreline, you know, that allows me to spec out, you know, materials and price things in a way that, you know, allows me to lower costs across the board. Whereas, you know, if I have a different model that I have to build in all these jurisdictions, I, you know, I have to do that much more work. It's going to cost more money and got to find new, you know, suppliers or vendors or whatever for these things. And I'm, I'm trying to come at this from more of a like manufacturing brain than a, you know, resident of the city brain.
I will say that as part of this project, we are interviewing developers who work in both Mount Lake Terrace and also the, you know, surrounding cities. So that will help us get to more of a fine grain on these numbers, but we haven't had the opportunity to talk to someone yet. So I don't have, you know, specifics on that yet, but that is definitely something that we're taking into account. And we're looking at people who both work in Mount Lake Terrace and also who might be interested in working in Mount Lake Terrace, but there might be some sort of barrier that is stopping them from doing so.
Got it. And, and I think that's great. What I would encourage is not just find someone who is building a Mount Lake Terrace, but maybe find someone who's built in multiple jurisdictions outside of this area and successfully completed a lot. I think we have a couple of, you know, smaller builders that are maybe familiar only with like very local, hyper local building. And I'd love to hear more from like a, a larger level of, you know, what are experiences in economies of scale and how that impacts, you know, affordable housing and what you can charge, what you can't charge per square footage, you know, and how you'd break up a lot, how you'd, you know, scale some of this. Because what I'm, at least so far, what I've heard outside of my technical difficulties is, is a lot of like, here's what I want, here's what we see. And, and I haven't heard a whole lot of like, here is the experience of other cities and then also other developers.
Okay, that's fair. Okay. Let's keep going. We're going to get through some other standards and then we'll get to the housing type test fits that will be instructive that have FARs and lot coverages on them. We can look in detail. Okay, height. We propose to build up in height from R1 to R4. You've already done that in the comp plan, right? To R4 allows up to four stories. We'd also offer five foot bonuses to fit those affordable units on the site for the affordable housing bonus. Or if retaining trees are doing green stormwater infrastructure. So similar to the lot coverage note that the R1 height and a bit of the R2 height would be a reduction from the existing maximum. So right now those are three feet plus 35 feet. And two, or sorry, three stories and 35 feet in the existing. And then two stories and 30 feet in the RS 4,800 zone. So in the RS 4,800 zone, you step down. So this is just going a step up as you go. And then the DADU height would be at a 25 or 30 feet maximum. So 30 feet in the R3 and 4, but 25 feet in the R1 and 2.
What is a half story?
Half story, you can fit inside a gable roof essentially. So there's, you know, you've got the centerpiece that's high and then the lower area.
So similar to like I, I maybe in Seattle where you have some extra height bonus for a sloping roof for the most part.
Yep. You can fit a lot of area up in there, bedrooms and things fit very nicely in a gable roof and, and it really diminishes the scale along the street.
One thought that I have when I look at this is that obviously a stated goal that we've had repeatedly over and over again is trying to maintain as much open space as possible. It'd be preferable if, if they're going to have more than one unit to be enclosed in one structure. So maybe that unit isn't something that is be sold, kind of like how I've always approached this is like, well, the, the DADU or the ADU and the primary residence are probably owned by the same person and then rented out or maybe not rented, but you know, another separate family member living, you know, however they're going to use it. But if it's enclosed in the same structure, you're maintaining more of the open space. But to do that, you may, it may be hard to do that in just two stories or even two and a half stories. For me, I was, I, I would say I, I, you know, wouldn't have a problem with those structures being three stories. And, you know, for still allowing, you know, that additional unit in there, you know, sort of to maximize as much square footage as possible, but minimize the footprint. The other sort of question or comment that I would have to is as part of this study, does it, because we don't have a lot of them in this region, but maybe moving forward we will, like subgrade, you know, basement type developments as opposed to, you know, ground level and up or in the backyard, you know, really maximizing that space. I also have sort of the same question. We'll probably, you know, get to it when we're looking at the examples, you know, for the larger units in terms of surface parking versus structured. I know that raises the cost too, but again, I'd rather see open space that's grass instead of asphalt. But at least for, for this screen, you know, this slide right now, you know, for me, I, I would like to, you know, I don't have a problem with the three stories, you know, in the R1, if, you know, if it helps meet that goal of allowing more open space as opposed, but still, you know, you're, you're sort of getting the both, the, the, the best of both worlds. The other thing I think of when we look at this too is that, you know, some of our other cities, especially like Seattle where we, you know, you'll see them throw an ADU in the backyard or a, a DADU in the backyard. I mean, you know, they have alleys. So that really changes how you're accessing those units and how those units sort of relate to each other, both in terms of the, the primary dwelling unit on a property and any adjacent properties because you're not necessarily right up on the back of everybody's backyard. It's got a big alley. You know, there's, there's a little bit more separation going on than is necessarily reflected just when you're looking at commercials.
Just to clarify, are you saying you're interested in three stories for the front buildings in R1 or for the, the DADUs in the backyard?
Well, see for me, I, I, I would prefer it all to be one building to maximize as much open space.
The state's not going to let you say that. You, you have to allow DADUs. So this is trying to control for the scale of a DADU across the board, except in R1, they're the same. But then the DADU is kept lower than everything else throughout as the zones increase in scale. And, and maybe you're also saying that, that R1 should allow three stories so that you have more green area and you know, less lot coverage basically.
I, I definitely don't have a problem with three stories for the primary building, but I don't think I would want to see a DADU.
Okay, so two-story DADU height seems good for everybody?
Yeah, it's pretty slaughter we have now.
Ideally, I'd prefer one. But if we can't say one, then definitely not.
Okay.
I would say that. So if the, if the main home is three stories, why can't the DADU be three stories? Or are we not talking about that? Because the main home is three, that was already established. It's not going to totally interfere with the neighbors if your DADU is going to have three.
Yeah, that's another.
I guess it depends on.
And obviously there's, there's massive, there's like massive value in having a third story, especially over, I'm thinking on the Ballenger side of the area where there's a great view potential.
I would just say typically if ADU or a DADU, you're not having the same setback requirements on adjacent properties. So typically those heights are controlled a little bit more than the primary structure. Typically.
You could also get creative and say that.
So there's other controls other than what we're talking about here, is what you're saying.
I think it's just impact on adjacent properties. If you're having a primary structure and additional structures up to four structures on a single family parcel, then just impacts to surrounding properties when you're talking those lower zoned residential properties and what does that look like if you live next to it?
I think we also have an assumption that the DADU is going to be in the backyard. I don't know if that's a safe assumption, given that the, like, you know, in the sort of the older areas of town, the block house is the size of a DADU. I also wonder if, you know, the size of the DADU would have an impact, like a three-story, thousand square foot structure is pretty tortured. I would say that. I would say that, um, like, it seems like we're trying to access, like, we don't want as much height in the backyard as we do in the front yard, if that makes sense. But then like, we're trying to regulate it through which is the primary structure and which is the accessory structure.
You just took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say, I suggest that actually, that you, this could be a rear, a height at the rear of the lot and you can set what that is. And that would apply to six-unit townhouses that go very deep into the lot, but at a certain point, maybe you want those to come down because they're next to a a single-family house that wants more privacy. So you, you could do that. The, the other thing to think about is maybe you allow a little bit more through bonusing in a DADU if you have affordable DADUs. And just to be clear from last time, a DADU really is an accessory dwelling unit. It's not just a unit in the backyard. It's a small unit and we're proposing those at a thousand square feet. The state says you have to allow at least a thousand square feet. So when I'm talking about a DADU, I'm really talking about a thousand square foot, probably more affordable or attainable unit in the backyard.
Yeah. Except here they'd be in the front yard. Cause they're the existing houses and then somebody builds a big one in the backyard.
Right. Okay. So to summarize the, the thoughts about height. Are we increasing R1? I'm also hearing maybe we should, the rear yard should be high as well. Do you want a lower backyard height?
I personally would want a lower back height. As, as low as we can legally say, you know, since we already have the state saying we have to be a minimum of a thousand, I personally think as an accessory dwelling unit, I think you could go smaller than a thousand, but we can't clearly mandate that. I mean, if they choose to build smaller, they can, but we can't say thou shalt not build.
So are we, are we proposing to do a DADU building height or a rear yard building height? They're different, right? Because to the, your point, a detached accessory dwelling unit could be in the front. Or the side, or the side.
So I'm, I'm going to throw this out there. What would be more legally defensible for the city? Cause I, I'm coming from the context of if I'm a building owner and I want to put a DADU that is the same height of my house and my house is three stories and I want a three-story DADU. And there's something, somewhere in the law that's not allowing me, I might go and obtain a lawyer to figure out like, well, that doesn't make sense. And so I guess if we were to implement this, if I am outnumbered by everyone on this, what is more defensible? Cause I could see a lot of people or even a developer who comes in and buys a couple of properties or, or, you know, and wants to build a bunch of DADUs in the back and sell everything off, um, you know, being able to claim that that might be a little unfair, or maybe I'm off base there.
Yeah, I would say, um, save your money on the lawyer. Um, it's pretty much, um, been in place for years. I mean, accessory type structures, whether they're housing or whether they're a backyard shed or whatever they are, they're typically controlled a little bit more than a primary structure. And that's
Got it.
You know, from the twenties. So I, I think that's kind of the reason is light air, that those other livability factors when you're talking about, you know, different types of scales in neighborhoods of, you know, what is that threshold? And of course we're talking about something that's, you know, we haven't done yet. Even for comparison reasons, this is all new to a lot of jurisdictions besides ours. So I mean, part of this is going to be road testing, some regulations and finding out what works and doesn't work, just because this is so new across the state. Yeah. Is there Seattle and other places? Yeah. But, um, yeah, I would say that's not really the concern. It'll be very defensible. It's just kind of looking at it more holistically as a community thing and, and what you want to see.
Yeah. And, and so then my other question would be, is there a way that we could implement not only just like affordability or, or even like green building type of you know, bonuses to get to a higher height? Is there a way we could throw in some of this light invisibility type of things where somebody could get to three stories? If they were in a part of the neighborhood where maybe building up three stories isn't going to block someone behind you from their view or, you know, any of their rights. It, you know, maybe you have a deeper view into more neighboring lots on your, you know, left or right side. But that, you know, if you have a small home that is fronting the street, you have a large lot in the back, you might have trees or a hill or something behind you. Therefore really the only, you know, privacy that you are taking away is, you know, at two stories, you're already looking over your neighbor's fence anyways into the, you know, left or right properties. Um, and then that third story really is not going to actually interfere with many other people, but it's acts, it's giving somebody that owns that property access to build another story and maybe gain more, uh, you know, value out of the building. And so then is there a way that like, we could say, I think we were talking about the, um, the tennis courts and we were talking about, you know, size of the fence and lighting. And those kinds of things, could we throw some of that into here to allow somebody to potentially get to that third story bonus where here at the, you know, at the, the summit or a center, or, you know, highest part of the area that potentially has a view and then adding three stories. Not only creates a more livable home, but also, you know, unlocks value for the building owner, um, but isn't, you know, and it's probably only going to allow very few properties to get to that level. But, you know, we're also going to put restrictions in there that isn't going to impede on other people's privacy.
We've definitely seen height or visibility mapping in different cities to, to understand how high you can go. I would say in the speed that of which you need to accomplish this code, it might be really tricky to do. It would be easy to apply a height bonus for affordability or for tree retention or for something else. That's a public benefit. So I, I think you could think about that and then maybe put the height question on the table for after the state deadline.
That makes sense. So then tree retention, I guess, but that's not also, that's not defining that the lot actually has trees. That's just saying that you're going to save trees. So it's not saying that, hey, this lot has enough trees blocking neighbors. Therefore like, we should be able to go up to three stories. It's more or less just saying like, hey, you might have a tree here or there and you're going to save it.
Right. It hasn't, it doesn't have anything to do with visibility or view. It's all about just
Okay.
Yeah. Keep, yeah. Keep, your trees are so beautiful.
Not trying to complicate things. Um, I'll say, cause you, you did ask a question. Um, I'm in terms of like the building heights versus the front versus the back, I think the back needs to be lower. I'd prefer the height to be in the front. Um, I'd also maybe even prefer the DADU building max height, if it's possible to do it this way. Cause we, you know, originally the R1, you had sort of the 2.5. Can the, the building max height for the DADU be 1.5? So they still are getting that second story and sort of the gable design. And they, you know, they still might be able to obtain a, a, a thousand square feet, but it's just we're helping reduce the height a little bit more.
We'll check that. The state says it has to be at least 24 feet tall and I don't know what if it says stories.
And then as part of checking that too, would, would you be able to see if instead of it be, you know, the, i- if there is like a lower level to it, like, you know, a basement in the DADU?
Yeah. The state doesn't say much about basements, but if you calculate your stories based on an average grade plan and allow that already, you can continue to do that. If you don't, we can, we can add it. We'll, we'll put that in the hopper to look at later. But yeah, it's a good, it's, I hadn't looked at that one. Okay. That's a really common code provision. Yeah, right. I'm from Michigan where it's flat too. Okay. Okay. Let's move off of height. Farther away from height we get, the closer to parking we get. Always a fun topic. Okay. One more topic before that fun starts. Okay. Setbacks. Front setbacks reduced slightly from the existing setbacks, um, going to 15 feet and 10 feet, depending on the zone. Right now you have 20 feet to 15 feet. So this is the biggest reduction from existing that we've done in the setbacks. Side setbacks would be consistent for all the zones with a little more distance required from the lot for taller buildings in R4. The eight foot, so in general, five feet, but we've added the eight feet for pedestrian access to a rear unit, just based on a lot of observations of middle housing that doesn't allow that. And you get utility meters and trash cans and, um, I'm losing like, uh, concrete walls, retaining walls. And then you can't get a stroller through. So we're saying eight feet seems reasonable for that little, yeah, right. And just for a little planting and personalization and a potted plant here and there. Rear yard setbacks are not reduced from current. So they're 15 to 20 now. And we're proposing 15 or 20 here with the setback in R2 being dependent on how many units you have. So when you have a few more units, you get a little more area. Okay. And then reductions and bonuses would be offered for affordability. And that, as we've been talking about, the tree preservation or green stormwater infrastructure.
What, what is maybe some of the other cities you've worked with? The, what were their opinions or, you know, the conversations on, you know, where the, the rear setback was already fif- already at 15 feet and then possibly allowing another five foot reduction. Don't only have it. Doesn't seem like much of a rear yard. 15 feet doesn't seem like much of a rear yard.
For a single-family house, it is not much of a rear yard, but when you're talking about middle housing, having a 15-foot yard is like woo-hoo. That can be quite big. You're saying, let's see, some of your townhouse zones have it here. Just looking at the, excuse me, amount of private or outdoor space you require. 75 square feet per unit directly accessible to each unit. So that's a seven and a half foot by 10 foot outdoor space for townhouses. My personal space is about that big. You can go outside, you can still have dinner outside, you can grill. And so we're thinking it's something between a single-family house and an apartment building. That's what middle housing is. So this definitely offers that. And we'll look in the test fits too. You'll see sometimes your, your outdoor private spaces on your side yard. And sometimes it's in the rear. Sometimes it's shared and then it can be bigger, but.
Yeah. Right now we allow rooftop patios as well. So it's not necessarily on the ground open space. I think if, what we have to look at is if you're truly allowing for middle housing, your, your standards can't be the same as a single-family home. Everything has to morph somewhat for it to actually happen. It's not going to be a single-family house with a huge front yard, backyard. It's just not anymore.
Yeah. What's funny to me when you say that is we're actually looking at like decreasing the area that the house can be in, right? Like, I think the majority, like, we've got the RS 7200 and the RS 8400. We've taken the RS 8400 rear yard setback and applied it to R1, but like, I'm not sure we have that much RS 8400 and like, you know, why is there a difference between the two? I've never been sure why. Like, um, R2, single-family zones are just not that different from each other and it's a bit of a dog's breakfast. I think this makes sense, uh, especially when we talk about the incentivization. My question is, is rear yard setback, that's, uh, the rear yard for the entire lot? Are we talking about the rear yard for individual units? Like based on unit orientation?
That's the entire lot. But nothing else goes back there.
Okay.
Except parking and landscaping and things like that.
And if you're on the cul-de-sac, then the rear yard is like some weird triangle or something.
Yes.
Do you have a lot of that?
It's a lot of area in the backs of the cul-de-sacs and we'll, we'll show you the cottage housing on the cul-de-sac.
Okay. I kind of, I don't know what everyone else thinks. Um, like the sort of 15-foot setback makes sense to me, but I could also be swayed with a 20-foot setback, uh, for R1 and 15 for R2. I do note that it is a bit of a square footage downzone as are some of these other things, but I'm curious what other people think.
I personally would be fine with 20 feet across the board. Um, but I understand, you know, you know, the point that you guys are making. If, you know, if it needs to go to 15 feet, it's fine, but pushing it to 10, I, I.
I think 10 in the front yard could make sense with, um, perturbances like, uh, at one point, I think there was something before the planning commission of can you build like a front porch into that setback? Like I think the front yard setbacks are generally a lot less useful than the back, the rear yard setbacks, um, in terms of, you know, creating distance between buildings and sort of opening up the, the ground to not being so much impervious surface and things like that. You can handle more stuff on the, the street side. So I think sort of the front and side yard setbacks make a bit less sense to me to keep really big. But I think the rear yard, you know, is it 15, is it 20? Like, I don't know if that's going to make or break any project.
And I, I would qualify, I, I was just referring to the rear yard, um, for, for that comment. Though there is benefit to maintaining the front yard setback as well, uh, as I see it all the time in Seattle, the developers, you know, they, they, you know, they, they try and push the limit as much as they can. So then they end up encroaching into the right of way to, especially to get access to their buildings. I don't know how Mount Lake Terrace handles it, but it ends up really cutting into, um, the uses in the right of way if the developer, you know, had, you know, especially when it's, the access is, uh, not right at ground level. So like, there might be stairs or winding stairs, you know, how, how are the stairs oriented? And, you know, once it starts encroaching into the right of way, then it's really reducing the ability to put the things that we want in the right of way. You know, at a, at a later date, you know, as, you know, or as part of the design of the street is getting redesigned as part of this development. I don't know, you know, what the thresholds get, but, uh, it's nice to have that front yard buffer as well. So developer, yeah, you do what you want to do, put all of it, but we're giving you the space to do it on your private property and leave the right of way completely open because we have our own plans for that.
I guess my, my only thing rebuttal to that is if it's, if you build something in the right of way, the city has the right of way to come in and remove that. So that seems pretty silly and like short sighted by whoever, whomever is doing that. But, uh, I, I would tend to agree with the idea of like the, the, the right of ways in the backyard, or I'm sorry, the, the the buffer zone in the backyard, I completely agree, should definitely be bigger than the front, but I would love to see ability to do things like allow stairs or small porches possibly come into that area, maybe to allow a developer or even encourage someone to want to build more middle housing because they can build a bigger backyard and be more likely to sell, you know, those homes with a bigger backyard and a smaller front yard. As long as everything's conforming to the law, not encroaching on the right of way. But also giving them the ability to, you know, push some of these smaller, I guess you could almost call a deck or some, I, well, actually I don't know how this is considered, but I would almost consider them like temporary structures or, you know, not permanent, not like, you know, a housing foundation. Um, so yeah, I would love to see that help us on the frontage and then kind of in the backyard. Definitely keep some of those buffer zones so that we can maintain the livability and, you know, how the city has kind of always can, you know, how everybody enjoys the city today.
I really like what you said there about the porches and these other things that are like kind of part of the building, but not the building. Those things that sort of help the building interface with the site. Like I think having flexibility for those kinds of things, um, does actually help us like have the building interact in a much more. have the building interact in a much more intentional and constructed way with its surrounding spaces. Like if you're playing the game of like, you push a lot of your buildings to the front and you push a lot of your buildings to the back and you leave a big middle open area and the site is kind of a common space. Then, you know, having allowances for like porches at the front yard and maybe even a little bit at the backyard. Like can you build a porch and have it encroach into that right of, into that setback a little bit? There's not a building, it's not multiple stories, but like, you know, can you have a roof for something that gives greater access to that outdoor space for one of those units? Like I think that makes a lot of sense and I like this thing you've started to set up where it's a building and then the things that help the building integrate with the site and then the spaces of the site.
I'll just add real quick. So right now in our code in these residential areas, we do have allowances for porches, covered porches and such that can encroach with five feet within those setback areas for exactly that, that kind of interface with the street and the front yard. So there is some of that built into the code right now.
Okay. I think that then answers my question that, yeah, I'm, I'm willing to see us shorten, you know, our, our requirements on the front yard if that is built in. And it'll, it gives builders the ability to, you know, lay out a structure on a building that might make it more sellable and therefore make them. Cause I, I think one thing that we might lose sight of is if we put too many regulations in here, people aren't going to build middle housing. They're going to maintain single family homes. And so I, I want to see us find ways to make it more feasible for somebody to want to build this housing. And a lot of it today, I think one of the biggest things is like, how big of a backyard can they put? And, and because, you know, if you can sell a, you know, six unit, you know, or, or sell a bunch of townhomes, like six units of townhomes, and they all have double the size of the backyard of let's say shoreline or, you know, Seattle or somewhere else where they have regulations they didn't think about too much. We're going to see more of it built and we're going to get closer to our goal here. Or if we try to constrain it too much, we're going to see people just say like, this doesn't fit into our, you know, economic model and therefore we're just not going to build this middle housing. And really a lot of it comes down to, yeah, space and how you can lay out a lot on the land. I mean, I work with software that people pay a lot of money for that helps lay out property on sites across the world based on zone, you know, your zoning and building codes and all of that. So the fact there's even money in that tells, tells you that like, that's a big reason for why developers actually invest in property and invest in projects. Anyway, sorry, that was my diversion there. So I guess what I'm also saying, one of my things is I would love to hear the recommendations from both the city and from our consultants on what they think we should, we should go about this.
Before going there, I'd, I'd like to actually, since this is apparently, you know, kind of a hot button topic here, I'd like to hear some of our other planning commissioners as well to kind of get their input. Where they're, where they're falling on this.
Hey, this is Commissioner Landis. I would just say I've been really impressed with all of the proposals provided and they look pretty good to me. I, I'm tracking what they're saying. It makes good sense. And I'm hearing the conversation in the room and their feedback also makes a lot of good sense. It's hard to know, right? So I, I would tend to just fall back on the proposal because it looks pretty good, especially in terms of trying to get this thing across the finish line as soon as we can. So that's kind of my high level thought.
Commissioner Stenson, do you have any comments to add?
Uh, nothing significant. I mean, I think that the, the setbacks that are proposed here are reasonable. And I think without having like further analysis or maybe seeing some of these test fits that much like Commissioner Landis said, I would kind of just rely on the proposals presented here.
And anyone else?
I agree. I like the proposals and I like that I heard that we already have in our planning that porches and covered porches can be part of a front yard setback. That's fun. The things I want is a covered porch and I do less front yard if I can get a covered porch.
Have any additional? No, okay. Yeah, I I would definitely say, you know, I don't want to see it reduced any more than what is being proposed here because we do already allow some of those allowances. Cause you know, we, when we talk about tree retention and vegetation, it isn't just in the backyard. We want to encourage it in the front yard. You need, you need space to do that. And then that still allows for additional things like porches, patios, access, you know, stairways where they can keep it fully enclosed on the private property. And there's no excuse for them to come to the city and say, oh no, we need to extend this out into the right of way. This, this is my day job, my deal. Trust me, they will do it if they, if they think there is the capability. And then all of a sudden the, the new homeowner who didn't do their due diligence, when they did the title search realized, oh, there's an indemnity agreement, you got to pay an annual permit and I just, yeah. Had to deal with a very upset person with the last few days because of that, because the developer, you know, STCI allowed them to put, you know, put its, you know, pretty much almost like a zero lot line. But it required a stair where access to the building in the stairwell had to go into the right of way. And yeah. Yeah. So the developers will do that if, you know, you give them an inch, they're going to take a mile. So I want, I'll, you know, as, as much setback as we can mandate is what I want to, what I would prefer to see.
Okay. Thanks for the feedback. Now for the fun topic of parking. Everyone loves to talk about parking.
Structured, underground.
Okay. So just, just a reminder, the HB 1110 bill acknowledged this, the impact that onsite parking has on the ability to fit units on a site, especially when more density is added. And so the maximum you can require on lots less than 6,000 square feet is one space per unit. If the lot is bigger, you are allowed to require two spaces per unit. This has quite a big impact on how many units you can fit on a lot. Because in some cases, a car parking space is about the size of the footprint of a unit. A little smaller. Okay. So we are proposing a minimum of one stall per unit in the R1 through R3. And then point seven five stalls per unit in R4. Keep in mind, these are just minimums. Developers can and will build what the market demands. There would be no bonus in R1 and R2, but we would recommend a point two five reduction in R3 and R4 for affordability and tree retention and green stormwater as we've been talking about. We would also recommend guest parking as one stall per 20 units in some of those larger sites. So we're putting them in the R3 and the R4, we could add it everywhere. Very few of the small lots will ever reach 20 units. And then we haven't really dug into the bike parking. But those are the recommendations for the number. Why don't we, why don't we talk about some of the dimensional standards and then we can come back and comment on parking altogether? So this is just taking that image from the duplex in Bothell that McKinsey presented. Historically in Mount Lake Terrace, you've had, you've allowed a lot of area for parking on the residential lots. We've seen a lot of two car or even bigger garages for single family houses. But with more units per lot, parking could dominate the streetscape or overwhelm the pedestrian environment, which we think this does, right? This is like two double garages and even bigger driveway. There is barely an, an entry. And so a standard that we've seen and used is habitable space, which is kind of the opposite of that garage or service space. So it's things like living rooms or entries or kitchens or dens or something that really gives life to the street if you were to look in or somebody you could people can see out onto the street, et cetera, not mudrooms or other service kind of spaces. Okay. So none of these are full proposals yet. Everything you're seeing in brackets is something we were testing because we had to get the slides to Christie, whatever it was Thursday. We've actually tested a little bit more, but we would like to propose a maximum percent of the front building facades that can be taken up by garage doors. And then kind of the inverse of that, a minimum percent of habitable space on those facades. And propose a driveway width linear feet that's allowed on a certain lot frontage. So it's kind of the last one down. And so I'll just say, what, what we're actually proposing across the board and not scaling it by residential district is a 50% garage width max on the building front. Setting back the garage beyond, behind the habitable space a little bit. And then allowing twenty four, oh shoot, one driveway per fifty feet of lot frontage. And Sandra, I may have gotten that wrong. If you are, have access to Brad's document, that'd be interesting to know now. We don't have to do the percentages exactly today, but just the idea that you would want to control the dimensions along the street. So I'm seeing some nodding. That's good. Okay.
We do it now, right?
You do now.
Yeah, let's keep doing it.
Well, I think what's important, you've already alluded to it, the, um, the, the pedestrian experience greatly diminish the wider the driveways are. But because we are going to be dealing with an on-street parking issue because of this, the more curb cuts and the wider the curb cuts, the less on-street parking there's going to be on top of that. So the, 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 the narrower we can make the curb cut and the less frequency that, that the curbs cuts occur, I think would be the ultimate goal. So that really is going to put the onus on the developer and the architect and whoever, when they're designing this to make sure that they you know, they can meet all those, you know, all those standards. I, my, my concern is even more so in the R3s and the R4s because the assumption was during all of our comp plan update and our town center update is like, oh, you know, we're trying to create this walkable community. There's only so much that's directly adjacent to the light rail station. And right now, unfortunately in our city, it's still very auto oriented. We're, we're not there yet in terms of the, you know, being able to, if you live in the city and not having a car and never needing a car, excluding my who walks and bikes everywhere. The, the
I own a car, I'm an avid driver.
I know. The average person just isn't, we're not there yet. And so we need to be able to recognize that and realize that the, the people that are beginning to be coming into these new developments as they occur, they're all gonna, they're all gonna have cars. They're all gonna still need to drive to most places. And so we, knowing that we need to be very hyper diligent about protecting the pedestrian realm and biking realm and, you know, non-motorized vehicle aspect of, of all this. So when I think about the frontage of a facade, 50% being, you know, garage, I cringe. I cringe. I would prefer to see, not see the garage or the automobile aspect of the development on the frontage at all. Hide it, mask it. Put it in the back of the building. And again, us lacking alleys, this really hurts us here because that's where you could use an alley. When we have these bigger, like we had one one of Landsberg's developments, didn't he actually extend the alley or he, yeah. Two of them. If, if we, if, if we're going to, the type of, I mean, we recognize that a lot of, you know, we're talking about this in infill terms, but most likely we're going to keep seeing what we see is aggregation. And so it's going to be more lots being put together. If we have a way to say, hey, we would like it's part of this development, maybe it's a bonus density, who knows what, please build an alley. Get, get the garages off the front edge of the building. Create a different access there. We won't have those curb cut issues, you know, that, that maybe it provides more flexibility. I, I don't know. Trying to think out of the side of the box here.
How do you guys feel about?
Is it related to curb cut? Is it related to curb cut and ingress into the property?
Yeah.
Cause I, I completely agree with the aspect of like, I don't want to see like 24 foot, you know, driveways into some massive, you know, garage system someone has for their four Corvettes. But if there's like one single egress that's, that might slightly interfere with the sidewalk, but it's serving both the ADU in the back and the home in the front, and the home in the front might even have a double garage. Or, you know, some sort of, you know, they, they could design the home in a way that they're not interfering with a pedestrian access, but you know, still giving flexibility to the design of the property.
I would say one of the things I think about is if we see what we've been building, which has been successful, is taking an existing lot and putting a strip of townhomes on it. And then you multiply that over and over again. And you go up a street, it's curb cut, curb cut, curb cut.
Yeah, yeah.
So to me, maybe having a density bonus where we're aggregating lot, we're enticing aggregation of lots where we have a single driveway for accessibility and therefore you can get a bonus in return just to try to minimize that type of development that we're going to see. That's kind of the easier thing to do. To me, it makes a lot of sense as well of just trying to minimize that.
Yeah, I, I like that. Cause, cause we are in a, you know, who knows whether we'll ever stop being a car oriented portion of the region, right? Like that's just how we were established and probably how we're going to be for at least until 2040, right? So, but I completely agree with making it more livable, more walkable. And the less, you know, weird little intrusions you have into the sidewalk, I would love to see far less of them. That could happen with a lot more middle housing.
So the flip side of this is the more you pull the, moving the cars around off of the street, the more site area you have to dedicate to moving cars around on the site itself. And I think where these townhouse developments start, you know, turning the wrong way and everything is where like then you have to make that space for the cars to all sort of back into their individual like units and come back out. Whereas if you had like, you know, just, you know, done the thing that everyone in the older parts of Terrace does where you just park all your cars in the front yard. You've taken the least amount of site for parking the cars. So I think there's probably a game we have to set up there. And I know one of the sort of limitations that comes of that is when you park cars from multiple units, like, you know, if you were to like, you know, build like a six car garage in the front yard and then put a house on top of it and then put, you know, three other units there. Like that starts to become a life safety issue because now you've got the risk of six cars sitting under the house and then that building has to go to the building code and you start needing sprinklers and all these things like that. I think in order to get more flexibility, it would be like, there's probably something we have to look at in the building code as well. Where you have the flexibility to allow like a unit to live on top of multiple cars. And we see this in cottage housing developments. We've got a couple of them already where they've built like the garages and they've put like a, a flat on top of the garages. But I think, you know, that's beyond the scope of this. I think the direction of this is good, but you know, I think maybe it assumes that there's a percentage of like, you know, there's only a single building on the lot. And, you know, that's why the percentage of it can be taken up by, you know, 55%. Maybe it's more limited in terms of like total lot frontage as opposed to individual buildings or something like that. Where did the 50 foot number come from?
Sandra, can you repeat the number for the linear frontage?
Okay.
So 12 feet per 50 feet. So 12 feet per 50 feet of lot frontage.
Yes. If you have like a 60 foot wide yard, would that be 24 feet?
We'd have to figure out, no, that would still be 12. And you don't get another one until you're at 100.
Okay. I think our current lot standard is 24 feet for the total lot. And then it's going to only be a single driveway. And then most of our lots, at least in the older part of town are 60 feet wide. And then when you get to the newer part of town, they kind of are a little bit thithering. So you're kind of limiting it then to like, for a standard lot, you would have a single width car driving into the lot.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
And the 50% of the garage facade of is, is both for a single family house or duplex or imagining a string of row houses along the street. So I'm encouraged to hear that you, I feel like I'm hearing a lot of people maybe interested in having a lower percentage. And so we have tested this. We have some examples and I wonder, you offered to do homework last time. Is it something you would like to see? And then, you know, kind of email us if you, if you feel like it should go below 50.
Yeah, I, I mean, me personally, I would like to see that. I know years ago, we were talking about, you know, sort of the issues of sort of the pig snout design of, you know, the garage, just that's all you see, you know? You see these developments come in and it's just entire house. It's like, it's a garage. Oh, and there might be a door.
Yeah, like that example. Yeah.
Yeah, like this example.
Pushing out further.
And it just, you know, and back, you know, who knows if the code still says it this way, but we tried to regulate that out.
Yeah, you set back now.
Yeah, we set back a little bit. But yeah, is, that is definitely not what we want to see. So as an, you know, just as an, you know, example, that's in a different jurisdiction, but yeah, I definitely don't want the, the frontage to be dominated by
Yeah.
Okay.
But then the, like, I feel, I feel like there's still a bit of a mismatch because if we're talking about limiting it to 12 feet of driveway per 50 feet of yard, like we have now bound two car garages in a lot of the city because then you have to like back out to this little 12 foot stretch from your 16 foot wide garage door. So I get the sense there might be a little bit of alignment to go through there. Is that the case? Or?
Are you talking for, uh, non-conforming? I mean, if you have an existing, then you have an existing. These would apply to like if you're, is that where yours?
So I think like if you're to build a new house.
Right.
You're putting two car garage there.
Okay.
Typically need what? About 16 feet of driveway in order to meet the garage door?
Yeah, it varies. I mean, typically those, those spaces are roughly about 16 feet wide.
I know the city's driveway standard handout that they give to residents suggests not having the full width for the entire driveway.
Right.
Narrowing it as it, as, you know, come more like a ribbon. So you're not taking up as much.
Yeah, I also think we're going from right now for a single family residential, there's a two car, you have to have space for two cars. And now what we're saying is, okay, if you're gonna build, then those thresholds are going to be lower. Therefore, the driveway can be lowered, almost like what was built here in the 50s, right? You had a single car garage, you had a driveway and somebody may need to pull out of the driveway to go. But I think that's pretty typical to what we're seeing for all new development is you're not seeing these humongous kind of driveways at the front of a house, right? For what's getting built. I mean, other than kind of the higher end stuff, but.
Yeah. So for single family homes, I have seen, you know, two or three car garages. For buildings where it's like a building and then maybe another building in the back, you might have a driveway that goes into the front of the house and then another one that comes around. So either way, you're still kind of exceeding that 12 foot minimum, which maybe is what you're getting at with the fire alarm, fire thing. But I think, you know, if we do decide that you can no longer have a driveway that fits a two car garage in Mount Lake Terrace, that might start to cause like, people might notice that in a bad way. Like, I don't know, it's just kind of like a smell test thing for me here. Like, I think, you know, I, I agree, we generally need narrower driveways. I agree, we need narrower garages, but my sense is that it's still something that's kind of being worked out. Cause I think the trade off we're playing here is that are you moving all the cars around on your site 100% or are you moving them with some assistance from the street or being a little close to the street?
Tacoma just went through the radical decision to not allow any garages in the front yard. They decided we will have a driveway, you have to park in the back, you can share a driveway and garage with your neighboring lot. There is an exception that if your garage is lower, so if you're coming downhill and you have a living space on top of the garage where you're within five feet of the sidewalk height, then that doesn't count. So there's, there's room for that. I think about that too.
Okay. Yeah, I think the right track for me, but like, you know, the specific numbers, if we were to adopt this today, I think they need a little bit more work, which could be for homework.
Okay. Okay, no one's talked about the stalls per unit. Should we go back?
I think it looks good.
Wow. Okay.
It's also the state minimum requirement, right? The state minimum max, maximum, minimum requirement, right?
Yeah, it doesn't look like that's changed. So I'm, I'm worried with that too much or hasn't changed too much.
Do we, do we know, maybe this isn't an answer you'll be able to give off the top of your head, but especially for the R3, how much of the city area zoned R3 is not within a reasonable walking distance of mass transit? When I say masters, I don't mean the light rail, I mean buses.
Buses.
I think most of it, can you go back to the land use now? Because I think.
We tried to put those areas on those multimodal lines, right? Okay, here we go. So I think when we, when we did the land use designations, if everybody remembers, those higher densities were, yeah, they're not necessarily on light rail, but they're in proximity to the major bus routes, et cetera, to get to light rail or get to and from through places in the city and surrounding communities. So I don't think we put that zoning anywhere else.
Okay. I, I only ask because bus routes can always be moved or canceled outright.
Yeah, sure.
It's obviously, living here as long as I have, I, I know the routes have never gone away, but they have changed. Whereas the light rail, obviously, once that thing's built, it's, that's hard to move. So that one's, that one's a little bit more guaranteed that that's going to be there.
Yeah. And I think where we even put where the bus routes are and where we ended up doing these zoning designations, these are on collectors and arterials. So these, you know, nothing's located where, you know, we don't have substantial traffic in where we've had existing routes for a very long time. So I think we're okay with kind of how we laid out or how we tried to lay out those neighborhoods. So.
And wouldn't it be safe to say also that community transit would follow us and our density more than we need to zone and define housing around their current, you know, bus stops and bus routes?
Well, I'd like to say yes to that. I think there is definitely I've seen in the last roughly last, this past year, more coordination with community transit and, and others with that. So I think that that's a good thing of where there's a lot more communication, but typically that hasn't necessarily been the case internally and externally, but it, I think it's gotten better.
I think what would probably end up happening here, you allowing the bonus density or I guess a reduction in minimum stalls per unit for affordable housing is what probably will end up happening is, is that the, the affordable housing unit is the one that's probably going to lose out and not, not, not get the parking. So.
Yeah.
Didn't we separate the parking payment from the payment for the house? Or is that something that is a Seattle thing and it just happens to be done by people here?
I know they do that for apartments. I don't know if they do that for actual.
I agree. I don't think, I haven't really seen that. McKenzie might have more input, but probably for bigger developments where you don't have a one to one. That may be possible, that they're not charging for the parking.
Yeah, I think the market does that on its own, charging for the parking separately from the housing.
Yeah.
Yeah. One other thing, I do think we should be looking more closely at the bike parking. You know, I like that they're all TBD here. I'm not sure why it's one per 20 units in R4. I would expect it to be more common to have a bicycle than a car if you're looking at parking ratios like that.
I do believe that's a typo in R4.
Okay.
I think it's just copied down from above. It's, it's all TBD.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. And then I think we should talk about what the minimum standards are for those bike parking spaces at some point in the future.
Okay.
If the parking ratios are higher, I'd suggest you have a game where maybe you substitute some car spaces for some bike spaces and it gives you a density that way.
If you guys want to look at what's existing right now, we went through this with the transitional zone, which is basically where the townhomes are now to require bike parking, just to kind of get an idea of where that's required now and how that looks to you. So then we can kind of decide what this looks like.
Okay, yeah. I'd like to see more like the lockers at the transit center rather than the staples at the transit center. If we're talking about dedicated bike parking spaces for homes, but TBD.
A lot of middle housing types can put them in their garage or bike enclosures, like sheds on the site somewhere for shared cottage housing or whatnot.
Great.
Do we need to be clear with this code that when we are talking about bike parking for these type of structures, that it would be, we, we would consider the garage or an enclosure and we're not talking like an open air rack? Cause I know what we see in Seattle is, is that you'll get the development and then as part of their street improvement plan, they'll say, oh yeah, we're gonna, we're going to provide racks, but we want it in the right of way. And then it becomes an S dot asset. And it's like, yeah, your bike's going to be stolen in five seconds.
Exactly.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do it onsite and, and I usually we say it's required to be enclosed or covered, covered.
Does it, can, can we require it to be secured as well?
Mm hmm.
Okay. Be logical to say, yeah, enclosed and lockable. Because bikes aren't cheap these days.
Yeah, that sounds good. Okay. Well, that was a little easier than I expected. That's great. So.
I think society.
The state told us what to do.
Exactly.
Pretty much. Okay. Test fit. So we went through and tested 10 common middle housing types on a typical 7,200 square foot lot, as well as a few double lots and one cul-de-sac lot. Just to help guide the standards development. And so this is an attached duplex and two detached houses. And so these illustrate that difference we're seeing about the parking, right? So there's the 20 foot, 20 foot setback to the, the front garage, two driveways. The detached has a driveway back where you can maneuver into the garages or have some tandem parking spaces. Alright, so one car for these duplexes, two cars each for the two detached houses. You're seeing the average unit size, 1790, 2320 gross square feet. That's after taking out the garages. And we're looking at an FAR of 0.56 for the attached and a 0.64 for the two detached.
So for that duplex on the bottom left there, how wide is that driveway?
24 feet.
And.
Or 20 feet. I mean, you could, the individual owners could decide, but they could go, this is before we decided our standards.
Okay. And we were talking about having a 12 foot wide driveway maximum for that site.
They'd have to do something like that.
Okay. You can see the very big difference between lot coverage for cars and the impervious surface ratio where you start having to move all the cars on the site here. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. And, and there's also a lot of space given because this one is parked at two stalls per unit. If this one were to have two stalls per unit, we would propose that they go around back as well. Okay, let's run through these and then, and then talk about them a little bit more. This is the stacked flats. So fourplex and a sixplex. The fourplex has four surface stalls. The sixplex has six surface stalls in the back. They have the exact same building coverage. Well, they should have this, they're nearly exact same building coverage, maybe a little more space for the fourplex because bigger units. Yeah. So, and then the net unit size is 974 for the fourplex. We should have rounded these, right? 974, 889 for the sixplex. So we've found it necessary to fit the parking in the setback. Uh, but none of the buildings touch the setback that we proposed earlier. Okay. So then six, and so four and six townhouses, they each have their own garages. You see a lot of the six unit or more townhouses here. Net unit size without the garages is 1500 for the four and 1350 for the six. Little bit more building area for the six townhouses. You can see the FARs are quite different from each other. The coverage is a little bit more in the six townhouses. Okay. Cotages on the cul-de-sac, we kind of standardized, looked at a lot of cul-de-sacs in CAD and kind of came up with a standardized cul-de-sac. And we're able to fit eight units on it. That's bringing the parking through the back and having a surface lot. Then leaving some, a courtyard in the middle of the site for everyone to share. And then having a 20 foot setback really doesn't leave a ton of space in the rear. And this is also kind of maxing out the density that was proposed. Similarly, on the right with you, where you have a parking lot in the back, six units on the double lot. We're looking at building coverage pretty low at 24 and 25%. FARs are very similar, almost 0.5. And then unit sizes are quite small, 1200 square feet. So we would see a benefit of relaxing the setbacks for two-story cottages and possibly even five feet for one-story cottages. So that you get more space at the center of the site versus at the edge of the site if they're short. So I'm seeing a little bit of nodding. We hadn't worked that into the code yet, but it's something to consider. Probably 600 square feet. So you'd need, if there were one story, you would want more area on the ground. Probably 600 square feet. So you'd need, if there were one story, you would want more area on the ground. So they may, they, they could be bigger. If we had more room to work with, with the setbacks, you might get, you know, shorter and larger in planned units.
Would you be able to look at it like, as we discussed earlier, kind of like the one and a half story option?
Yes, absolutely, you could.
Because I know for me personally, I still think two stories is a little much for what I envision these to be. Obviously, one story may not be doable, like in this design, you know, when you're trying to put in six here, as you have in some of your examples. Maybe six doesn't work, but maybe four does. I don't know, but you know, whatever numbers you guys can come up with, you know, for, for some examples to give us some, some stuff to, to look at, that would definitely be helpful. I think. Well, hold on, my other comments, because it looks like we still got at least one more slide.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that this is, is just testing what we think of as cottages. There's nothing in the code that is, that we've proposed yet that's prohibiting three stories in the zones that allow that, right? So in the R3, somebody could come in and do three-story cottage housing, or we'll, we'll say what we're going to name it in the next section. But what we're suggesting kind of in this orange thought bubble is you can stick with all of the regular setbacks for cottage housing, but maybe when you do lower scale cottage housing, you get a, a smaller setback because it doesn't matter as much to your neighbor because you're, you have a short house. Okay. And then the last one is more rental units. So this is the courtyard apartments, eight units, each with a parking space shared behind the kind of taller back part. So not fee simple and therefore rental, but a skinny driveway. Actually, this one, yeah. So we're saying eight units would only need one 12-foot driveway. But once you get above that, you would need 24-foot driveway so that you can have a two-way. And so the multiplex has 14 units and 12 surface spaces. So that's a little less than a one-to-one. So this would be in the R4 or R3. The units are quite big in the courtyard apartments. So one thing we thought, maybe it would become more feasible if it had more units and they were smaller. But then the multiplexes are like one and two-bedroom units average. And then their building coverage is 40% for the courtyard, 29% for the multiplex. And the FARs are both under one. And McKenzie will tell you, the more units you can get, the more feasible it is. So reducing parking could be a good option. And that's why we were starting to reduce the parking proposal in those zones where we expected more multiplexes.
Yeah. You bring up a good point, and I think one number I would like to see from these kind of analyses is you got the, the area of the building. But you've also got the area of the parking as well. And some of that overlaps with the building because some of the building has to be dedicated to parking. Like, I think the really, the interesting thing to me in these test fits is just, especially when you are on the single lot layouts, like just how much it explodes when you start having to move the car around on the site. Like, I think there's a big jump between, like, if you can only pull one car in at the front, or however many cars that is, two or three, versus when you start having to bring the car around and then move it around on the site and then move it into the parking space. Like, like if you go to the townhouse one, like, you know, that's like probably combined what maybe 60, 70% of the site is for buildings and parking and the entire ground plane is for parking. Like, that's just, you know, I think a number we should be looking at as well when we're talking about FAR should also be like percentage of site dedicated to moving cars around. Because then you start creating these like five-foot setbacks here, and maybe this is another one, where the, the dimension of the site is less than eight feet or 10 feet or whatever it is, it's like a usable space. The beer can space, I've heard it called, where you just throw a beer can in there and nobody cares because it's not a real space. It's just like forgotten and kind of useless. Like.
Which space is that, just to clarify?
Those five-foot yard setbacks on the left side of the townhouse development. And this is like an example of where the building is oriented wrong. And then suddenly you've got like three stories, looking into what eventually becomes three stories of townhouses 10 feet away on the other side down this little tuberculosis alley there. So, like, sorry, I probably shouldn't say that.
No, no, no.
No, I mean, like, this is, this is really important work, right? Like, this is like showing what the constraints are, like when you start having to like combine all these things on a single site. Like, this is, this is really valuable because we can like see what these test fits are looking like here and what the ultimate like decision that we plan, as planning, people who are planning these, like, you know, zoning regulations, like this is what is going to develop. And so I think this is like, you know, this, I don't know where I'm going with this other than saying that I think, I think I started saying that, like, looking at the percentage of the site devoted to cars on the ground floor is also an important number we should be looking at. And are there other things that maybe we want to be looking at as well? Like, how much of the site is like a usable space where you could fit like an eight-foot by eight-footer, a seven-footer, 10, whatever the dimension is? Like, you know, is that something we want to be looking at as well to sort of encourage good site planning?
I would ask, especially this last slide really highlights kind of something that I was, you know, was thinking about earlier. You know, the, at least with the courtyard apartment, there's a little bit of dedicated open space that's preserved. But even there, you see a lot of, a lot of this open space that we're talking about wanting to preserve is asphalted over because it's for the vehicle access. On the, the, the small multiplex, even more so. I mean, I don't think that accomplishes any, any of our goals in terms of trying to preserve open space because pretty much all the open spaces is asphalt. I guess, and I don't know if this is something that you guys would be able to do. I'm kind of curious, at what point would it pencil out for the developer in terms of size of the development to go with something that is structured underneath the, the building itself? Like we see with our larger multiplex, our larger apartments. I'm sure that it's a high number. But I just, just so we kind of have that as a reference to be like, okay, so here, this is, this is kind of looking at, okay, maybe this was two lots that was aggregated. You know, at what point, you know, is it three lots, is it four lots, or you know, what, what size would it be before it starts penciling out? I know, I can even, it's just north of downtown Bellevue, but there is a townhome development kind of right there at the edge of downtown where it hits residential, I would say it's like 1/10 or something like that, where it's a really nice townhome development with structured parking. So I know developers can build it, but whether or not it pencils out for, Bellevue's a little bit different than us and those are really nice looking townhomes. But it would be helpful to know that threshold. So when we're looking at this, it's like, okay, we, we know it's doable and it's feasible and it would still allow to have that narrow driveway and it would be able to preserve open space either, you know, where the building's to the front of the property or if the open space ends up being more of a courtyard style. And is it, it's open space with plantings and vegetation, but it might be parking underneath as opposed to, you know.
Yeah, that's a good point. I would say it's maybe less of a question at what point it pencils out, but more what prices it go for. Like, if they think they can sell it at the price that they would need to, to make that work, they would. But having to build the parking underneath the structure and, you know, you have to, you know, dig out the area and then it's more expensive to like have it underground and everything and all of that would get passed on. And yes, there are, you know, it does get more feasible as things get denser, but the cost of that structured parking is really high. And with townhomes especially, I, I'm not confident that you could get there at a scale that a townhome development would have, where you would be still selling it for a price that would be more attainable than a single-family home.
What about for the apartments?
For apartments, you usually see structured parking more in more like five over one, six-story, five-stories apartments. You're, you're looking at larger buildings, basically. It's actually about like $50,000 a stall and that's in a large apartment building. And for, like, from the consumer side, I don't, if I'm buying a townhome, I don't particularly care if my garage is underneath or on the ground floor, but I do care if it's $100,000 more, which, I mean, maybe not quite that much. But that's, that's kind of where you're bumping into that feasibility gap.
So I think then that it really ends up being something that we need to consider when, you know, we're looking at these building types. Then if we're never, you know, if the odds are, we're probably not going to see a structured parking option and it's all going to be surface parking, then we're going to be really eliminating vegetated open space being replaced with, you know, paved, paved parking and driveway.
I mean, there are like the private garage options that are not underground. It's the underground part that really adds a lot.
Yeah.
But.
But even if it's a private garage above ground underneath, like say on the first floor of the building, like you, you kind of have it in this, the courtyard apartment option, you still need that sort of extra wide driveway in the back of the building for the vehicle to be able to pull in and pull out.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
But they do have a courtyard, which is nice.
Yeah.
As a consumer, do you care if the townhouse garage is directly attached to your townhouse? Or do you care if you have to like walk across the site a little bit to get to it? Is there data that shows one or the other?
It might decrease a little bit off the sales price, but, I, I mean, assuming it's on the same lot, I would say it probably doesn't matter that much.
Okay. I don't know, like, I think the feasibility studies probably show you with a single lot townhouse development. And like, you know, I don't think, other than corner lots, we really have a lot of lots that pencil out under current zoning standards. Like, you kind of need two lots to make a townhouse development like this work, just from a, a car standpoint, which is what we've seen locally here. But I think, I don't know how much problems, how many problems that solves when you separate the parking out of the building. Maybe it matters, it, it like, it seems to matter more on at least two lots. Maybe you get a benefit from that where you don't have to co-locate the parking with the building itself. And then also, it's just kind of funny to me to note that, you know, one thing that would solve all these problems is if you've just put, you know, with these 60-foot wide lots, six parking spaces angled directly in from the street and then like all of the lot is, I see Nick going, err. And yes, it's terrible for the street. You should not do it, but I mean, you know, it's, you know, at a certain point, like you start exploding the amount of parking you have to provide, space you have to provide for parking. And I think that's an important number to track.
Okay. Did we move on to proposed housing types?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Okay, we heard from you last time that you're interested in all the middle housing types and basically you want more than just townhouses. And so we're proposing five types, singles, slots, rows, stacks and courts. And I'll go over each in detail, but overall, they're organized into three that most likely have private yards and two that most likely have common or shared yards. And then all of the types fit within the HB1110 housing types. So they had nine and you needed to pick six, as well as three that are really common in lower mid-scale neighborhoods. So adding single-family houses, DDU's, backyard units, attached ADUs and multiplexes. Okay, the singles are essentially a single-unit building that's detached from any other unit. It's a detached unit. It can be located at the street or in the backyard or in the middle of a couple of units, as long as it's detached. And then each unit has its own private entry. So this is, but this is really separate than courts because courts also have a courtyard. Okay, and these map to a single-family house or DDU's or backyard units. And then this is what they look like. We all know what these look like. Can be big, can be small, can be in the back, can be in the front, be old, could be new. Slots, so slot home is a term that was coined in Denver for exactly what you see on a lot of your sites. So it's a building with attached, single or multi-story units that's aligned perpendicular to the street. And the slot is the driveway that gets you into those drive, or parking spots. So units are configured side by side, each unit has a private entry and that shared driveway is usually there. Doesn't have to be there in, in the definition here, but that's how it was coined. Okay, and these are examples of them, where you're seeing, in some cases, just the, something that looks like the side of a building. This is an example Sandra found with a lot of garages on the side, sometimes looking better with more of a front entry. And I know you guys have been encouraging that, as in these examples, but there's always that driveway. Rows are really similar to slots, but they're, so they're attached, single or multi-story units, but they're aligned parallel to the street. So they can be located at the street or in the backyard, parallel to the street, and they're configured side by side and each unit has a private entry. And I'm not saying what these are mapping to, but you know, attached ADUs could, could be considered a row or a duplex or a triplex as, if they're lined up along the street. Most usually, we call them townhouses. And so these are some examples. This is a side-by-side duplex, row houses, row houses, row houses, right? Lots of different styles, lots of different entry types. We see them as three stories a lot, sometimes two stories. Sometimes they're a little fatter, but this is kind of the scale we're seeing in the region right now. Usually with a garage on the ground floor, living room above if the footprint is small. Sometimes the, if they're wider, there can be a, a living room in the back. And sometimes they don't have parking. Okay, stacks are the, are stacked flats. They're a building with attached units that stack on top of each other. They're, they usually have a shared entry, but they may also have private entries. So sometimes like a fourplex, they might each have their own entry, but they're stacked on top of each other. When you get more units, usually they have a shared entry. So this could be attached ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, fourplex, you know, all the plexes, stacked flats and multiplex. And I assume that you want to allow multiplexes with more than seven units in the R3 and 4.
Yeah.
Okay. These are some examples, some more historic, some new. Portland has, has some good success incentivizing sixplexes. So this is a current new one in Portland. Okay, and then courts. It's really those attached or detached units arranged around that shared courtyard space. They can be attached and side by side or stacked or detached, or any combo of that. It's really about the courtyard here. And so courtyard apartments and cottage housing fall into that category. Okay. Cottage housing, courtyard housing, this is Grow Homes in Bainbridge, like a intentional ecological community. That's pretty cool. Okay, so then that's, this is the overwhelming map of how they all map to each other, those HB11110 types on the side and then what we're proposing for Mount Lake Terrace on the left. That's the last slide here. Oh, just something to say, this, for the slots and the rows, we debated, Sandra and I debated on this for quite a while. Like, are they a different type? Are they just the towns, right? Is it just townhouses? And we really felt that because of, because of the situation you're having with a lot of the slot driveways and singles, so many of those, it might be good to differentiate between that and row houses because rather than saying, we're townhouses. we're townhouses that are perpendicular to the driveway every time in the code. You can actually have a term for that and it helps you to um, have a design standard that's specific to that condition. We do recognize that if it's on a corner lot, is it a slot, is it a row? So that might be a little flaw, but I think we could treat it as if you're trying to treat the condition in the design standards of something happening at that driveway edge, it's, it's about that edge, it's about the slot home edge or something like that. So that is our proposal and I'm curious to hear what you think about it.
I think you should have written the middle code. Like this makes, I feel like this gives you more descriptive of the ability of the building's relation to the site. And I think that helps us quite a bit when we're making design standards. Um, I like it. Uh, probably speaking through six years of architecture school here where these don't describe actual buildings, but they just describe relationships of buildings. Um, so I might be alone. Um, the courts, I think you could probably make them, I, I don't know how much we're turning this into laws that are rigid, but I think you could probably combine some of these, like they don't like, you know, with different types, like, you know, you could make a court out of daddos, for example. Um, I think, um, there's also, you know, the, uh, the rows, like I think probably would make a lot of sense for some of our, our two development, like with, uh, you know, 60 foot wide lots, you might wind up seeing duplexes in the front, duplexes in the back, kind of centered on a parking lot, which might then turn into a court. Like you could say that there's a driveway. So I think there's like, there's bounds between some of these. Um, that, I don't know how we, that would wind up turning into code, but I like the direction of this.
Thank you, and I will say it's fairly similar to Tacoma's new code. And what we say there is that you are allowed to combine them in any way that you want and just be clear and intentional in the permitting process about how you're treating each of them. But yeah, completely recognize that some of these rows may have a top and a bottom floor too, they may have their own ADU. Traditionally they have, there, there have been many units in a row house. So that's good feedback, we'd make sure to say that you could combine them.
About our online commissioners, guys have any additional comments? I'm not hearing or seeing any. Um, Mr. Thompson, you have any additional comments? Okay. Um, minor brief, more of an observation. Um, I am sure there is a corny dad joke somewhere with the slots being coined in Denver and the men being in Denver.
Oh, that's funny.
It's a little late in the evening for me to come up with one myself, so I'll leave it at that. And then I appreciate on the, the courts diagram that you, you provided some historic, more older historical buildings that is an example, I know, and I'm totally blanking on the architect's name right now, which is frustrating, but I know there was a local Seattle architect that created some really nice court apartments uh, in Seattle in the twenties, uh, in the thirties. And then, um, obviously, uh, LA has a lot of good examples as well of this historic court apart, apartments or, you know, residential units that are on the smaller scale and, you know, when I, when I think of courts, that's what I think of, I think of kind of the, the Seattle historic example and then LA and then kind of what I've seen in some areas, I'm just like, oh, that's big. That's not, that's, that's not what I, for years I've been visually imagining in, in my mind. So I kind of appreciate that you, you've thrown in a, a mix. Um, uh, you know, of, of examples here, both a little larger scale than maybe I'd like to see and, you know, some that are more, you know, on a smaller scale, which I'm, I personally think would be a little bit more appropriate. So.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're, looks like we've still got more sections here.
Yeah, you know, and let's, let's just go quickly and I might ask you to do homework, it's getting late. Um, this is basically to say that we talked last time about organizing elements for the design standards specifically. So we've just been through all of the tables that kind of is the conventional code. It controls the density scale, the numbers, right? Very written, very, um, table oriented. And so we are proposing, we kind of gave you the, the option last time, would you be interested in more general design standards that applies to all the different housing types? Or really tailor each one, or tailor design standards for each type? We love the types, we think they're really fit Mount Lake Terrace, but we also think there are so many typical things you should do here related to pedestrian orientation and the porches and, um, windows that look onto the street and all sorts of things that really are common among the types. And then have a few specific guidances as needed for each housing type, and that's why we need to name those housing types. And so we're just recommending to, to do that approach. And then the, the last three slides, and this I think could be the homework. The, these are just lists of, so landscaping and amenity standards that we should consider. So you could, you could email back or however you want to do homework and say, we absolutely need this, this and this standard, let's get rid of that and please stick with the existing standard or lower it or raise it or something like that. So similarly for, um, just elements that are really pedestrian friendly, front ele, I, I just mentioned, front orientation to the street, that you, it needs an entrance from the street, that it has porches or covered entries, et cetera. And then, and then articulation, so specific things meant to, um, kind of break down the scale of buildings, especially when they reach a certain size. And our architect in the group is going to be keyed in on that, on that. So are there things that you like on this list or don't see on this list that you've seen elsewhere? Um, would be interesting to hear.
When you send out the questionnaire, whatever format it's going to be, and, um, can you incorporate the comments that we've already made? Like especially tonight, so that'll be on the form and you, and you maybe just like a little asterisk or something. At the meet, at this meeting, you added this in addition to what, you know, was already in the presentation. Cause I know we've, all the commissioners have made a lot of comments, you know, throughout this presentation, so I want to make sure that those are captured.
So what we plan to do, and then we've, and we have a next step slides, but basically we have a week and a half to develop a complete draft code, which is a strike track changes version of your current code to get to commerce. Right? So a week and a half for a draft and then a little bit of review time and then it goes to commerce. So what I would, if possible, if you can comment on just these three slides as they are now. And then we'll take that, all of that together and put it into the draft. We can do a what we heard and just send it out, we get it to Christie and maybe you get it, or however you guys handle information, but uh, we always do that first thing, like just, what did we hear, what are we going to do? So we can, we can kind of, and you can look at that too as homework, right? Just to make sure we heard what, what we thought we heard and, and we, there are going to be a couple of places where we're not sure what we heard, like FAR versus building coverage. If you have more thoughts on that, we, we do need to hear those because I also heard things that you want to bonus and without a meaningful bonus, it's not a bonus.
Um, the, when we had to fly through the comp plan, um, I think you all sent us big Excel tables and we filled them out. So there was like a consistent format, um, if that helps.
Got it. Okay, let's.
And then we can like review each other's comments as well, to save meeting time.
Okay. Okay, that's great, we will do that. And then I think we're going to skip housing action plan.
Yes, I think we can hold on that one.
But good stuff to read in your packet, right? So you can understand where we're headed there and then open house?
Yes, on Wednesday in this room. And we're, um, setting it up so that we have, um, several boards about both the code and the housing action plan. They're meant to be interactive so that we can gather feedback on, from the public about not necessarily as weedy or even close to what we've been talking about, but more about preferences about, you know, do you like more trees or more open space or what's important to you? And also starting to get into implementation of the housing action or the housing element goals. So a lot of content there and we'll be giving a short presentation as well. Um, although it will be a much higher level of the presentation that we gave tonight. Um, and then after that, like Heidi said, we're writing the draft standards. We are working on interviews. Uh, we are upcoming, working on focus groups. And yeah, we will be back in two more weeks, right? Or three weeks, three weeks on April 14th to talk through some of the draft standards. We're going to brief the city council after that. And then on May 19th, we'll be back to do another workshop where we basically present the final code and work through any last changes and then on the 26th, we are bringing it to you for adoption.
Quick question, um, for the thing on Wednesday, the brief presentation at 6:30 is, since you guys are gonna, you said you'll probably have, uh, you know, like pistols and stuff around. Will the presentation be a little bit more sit down formal, like will the chairs be set up too? Or is it just like, hey, everybody gather around and you're only going to talk for like five minutes or?
Well, you're going to set up chairs, we'll probably talk for like 15, 20 minutes.
Okay.
So long enough that I think people will probably want to sit.
Just trying to plan. When should I show up and, you know, sometimes I just come early, sometimes I come later.
Yeah. Um, it'll technically start at six, but we'll do the presentation at 6:30. But yeah, at six is when it, people can come, walk around.
Anybody else have any questions? Comments?
How long did Tacoma take to do this?
Two and a half years.
All right, we're about two months a week here, so.
It feels like it.
Thank you for your feedback, this is, this is good, this is a lot, but it's really good.
All right, thank you. Okay, so now hearing or seeing anything regarding this agenda item, we'll go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is director's report.
I would just say Tacoma's big government, we're small and lean, so we're, we get into it.
Well, HB 1110 also came, HB 1110 came out in the middle of the process, so we had to go back. We learned a lot.
We're just, you know, learning all the good things that some people have done. Believe me, we're in the same boat as a lot of other people right now.
Right.
So don't fear, um.
Thanks Olympia.
Uh, yeah, and probably more to come after this legislate, legislative session, stay tuned, but, um, there's no shortage, shortage of a need for planning commissioners at this point in time. Um, there will be food at, um, uh, the open house um, for folks since it starts at six and also childcare, just FYI, so just hoping to get everybody out. I wanted to let you guys know too, that on April 2nd and 3rd, council is doing interviews for the open um, council position. I believe there's 14 applicants or so, I can't remember if there was one or two more that came in at the end, but, so they're going to be doing those interviews over two days, um, and then we'll pick, um, council member Payne Donovan's replacement, um, appoint that person for that, so that's about it. So thank you for bearing with us, um, and going through these things. There's more work to do, as you guys know, additional zoning that we need to get done, critical areas, so again, this year will be fully loaded, um, trying to get work through everything, so. And I've also spoken to, uh, engineering and public works to have them come and kind of update you on what they're doing as far as engineering standards and, um, the like, so we'll fit that into when we, when we're not so pressed with some of the other stuff that we need to do, that we can have um, them come down and talk to us. And that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for, uh, staff?
No question, just a comment, I'm sorry I missed the presentation to the city council. I forgot to put it in my calendar and I, until I saw you beautiful people in the, what's happening, I'm like, I missed that. But I had planned to be there, so I apologize for not being on top of that. Were you there, Adam? I wasn't the only one.
Cher Batista was there and so, um, I appreciate that very much. And so we presented and, um, yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
I, I would say, uh, you know, council seems to like having, uh, all the different boards and commissions come on the same night. Um, but what I've noticed is that, um, they don't seem to ask as many questions.
When there's that.
There have been years past where, you know, it was just us presenting that night and we would be up there for maybe 45 minutes, an hour. And they would actually be engaging with all the planning commissioners and trying to get feedback, questions and stuff. And I'm not just saying that just for the planning commissioner, I, I, I saw it with the other, other groups too, so.
Yeah.
Everybody had, you know, plenty of time to speak, but I, I, you know, I think there's still benefit to sort of having the day to yourself and, you know, really focusing on that one, you know.
One commission.
Well, yeah, one, one border commission at a time, but. I've been to enough of them where I can actually.
See, yeah.
I can, I can, I can see.
It would have been only my second one and I have to calendarize it.
All right, so, uh, with nothing left for the director's report, we'll move on to item number seven, miscellaneous business by, uh, call planning commissioners. Anybody have any miscellaneous business? Any future absences, vacations? All right, not hearing or seeing anything, uh, go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.